Started on the Monday, September 13th, 2021, regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Radnor Township. If you could all take your seats. Let's all get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay. Let's get started, please, with public participation.
Can you hear me? Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. Good evening. My name is Heather Gill. I live on Ivan Avenue. I have been a Radnor Ward Three resident for over 18 years. I am here tonight because I want to describe an event that occurred on September 11th, last Saturday, during what is known as Porch Fest. The incident occurred on a property that was owned by a family that are newer residents toward Three. Was the family graciously welcomed to the neighborhood by the representatives of the Porch Fest committee? Absolutely not. Interim Commissioner Agnew, and I apologize if I said your name wrong.
Agnew G. M. Roy.
Correct. Thank you. Showed her lack of ethics when she aggressively walked onto a private property, told us that she is our Ward Commissioner and runs Porch Fest, and that all politics are not welcome here. Instead of having a civil conversation with the property owners and people on site, Commissioner started raising her voice, asking questions without waiting for any responses. What she did was continue to be hostile and called the police to the property, and eventually shut down Porch Fest at this property. She told the band to remove their equipment and to leave the property. What is most disturbing is that the Commissioner immediately identified herself as a township Commissioner and tried to use her township position to intimidate and bully. This was an improper use of her position. The Commissioner then continued to be agitated and said that the people at the property were breaking the law. However, when she was asked to inform everyone of what laws were being broken, she refused to answer. Two police officers came to the site, looked puzzled as to why they were there, and left without taking any action. What a waste of time, of our taxpayer money. It should be noted that the Commissioner walked away from the site when the police arrived, and when the police left, she came back to the property still hostile. The Commissioner then shut down the band and had them break down their equipment, and it was a lot of equipment, carry it to another property and reassemble it. The band members were justifiably upset, as were many of the followers that expected to see them at this location. The Commissioner would not tell us the new address where she relocated the band so we could inform band followers. A young Boy Scout was selling popcorn on the property as well, packed up, fled the site as he witnessed what was occurring. What a nice example this Commissioner gave to a little Boy Scout. From what we could gather from her behavior and her temperament is that she did not like a table that was set up at the event. The Porch Fest website does not contain rules or regulations as to what is allowed or what is not allowed at this event. The table in question was on a private property, was giving out free water and free bottle openers to people, only people who wanted to take them. Because a property owner gives permission to allow Porch Fest to have a band at their property, the property does, the band, the property does not mean that the owner loses all of their legal rights to have other people or events on the property. I would like to note that the Porch Fest neighborhood contained various tables with a wide variety of messages. I can only hope that that Commissioner did not go to the other properties and act as uncivil as she did at this subject property. The Commissioner properly used her position and title as a Commissioner to shut down the second band at the property. Again, it should be noted, the website does not contain any rules or regulations for this event. The Commissioner was disrespectful, showed her true temperament, lacked ethics and civility, as well as weaponized the police. Did her actions violate any of the Commissioner's rules or ethics when she stated she is the Ward Commissioner and she runs Porch Fest? All while trespassing on this private property. Commissioner and other local officials are associated with various committees and organizational groups that support them, and that did not stop members of Porch Fest from having a committee. In fact, one elected official, who is currently running for school board, even has Porch Fest listed as one of her accomplishments on her political palm card that was just mailed out to residents. We need school board members, commissioners, public officials that are respectful, professional, and civil when they are confronted with an issue. They need to be calm and tolerant and offer discussion instead of hostility. Most importantly, we need public officials that do not throw around their political titles, power, and position when they deal with Radnor residents. Public officials must be made accountable for their actions. The Commissioner did herself a great injustice in front of a lot of people. She crossed the line and does not represent the qualities I look for in our Radnor community, such as composure, compassion, civility, and being inclusive of all people. It's long past due that our public officials in Radnor do more than just post signs promoting civility, transparency, inclusivity, and uniting our community. It's time for them to live the words on those signs. Thank you. May I have, am I? No?
Is there any additional public comment?
Hi there. My name is Avery Rome, and I live in the Sixth Ward, and I've lived in Radnor for almost 30 years. I'm rising to speak on behalf of Resolution 96, which allows or encourages the township to partner with the Delaware, with the Darby Creek Valley Association in their application to get a grant to come up with a full plan for the watershed area. And I think this would not only be valuable to us in our knowledge of the nature we're dealing with, but it would enable us to figure out which areas were the most vulnerable and use our funds to the best advantage, and we wouldn't be doing things in a piecemeal fashion. So I applaud the Board for considering this and think it would be a great asset in our approach to extreme climate going down the road.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Hearing none. Let's move on to Item 2 on the agenda, which is the motion to confirm Ricky Foster Jr. as the Public Works Director. I will so move. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any Commissioner comment?
I will speak real briefly on behalf of Ricky Foster. You have done an amazing job as interim, as well as through the four years that I've been here. I've seen you work diligently, do it with a smile on your face. No one wants to empty out a garbage can, but when you do it with a smile on your face, you have character, you have my vote. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is there any staff comment?
Mr. President, if I could, just real quickly, I would like to, or recommend to the Board of Commissioners for confirmation, the appointment of Ricky Foster as the next Public Works Director for Radnor Township. As Commissioner Farhi summarized, you know, Ricky approaches the job every day with that smile on his face, and it's genuine. He's someone who enjoys coming to work every day and working with the men and the women that work throughout Radnor Township, but especially the folks down at the Public Works Garage. He has stepped up tremendously, not just in the last couple of months since Mr. Simmons' retirement, but also as the second-in-command during the few months that Mike was in charge at Public Works, including taking care of the rain and the snowstorms that hit in December. And then, obviously, we've had our share of circumstances this summer as well with the weather events. Ricky has command the respect and, or the respect of all the Public Works employees, and we've seen a tremendous response from that department while Ricky's been in charge. The process started several months ago, where we interviewed a handful of qualified candidates, narrowed it down, and then held subsequent interviews with, obviously, a smaller pool of candidates. And through it all, Ricky rose to the top. So it's a tremendous compliment, not only the day-to-day work that Ricky does for the Public Works Department and for Radnor Township, but he, well, for lack of a better term, he beat out the other candidates through his, you know, his job performance and the way he conducts himself day-to-day. We're always happy to promote from within, and so I'm excited at the opportunity to continue to do that for Public Works. And I know Ricky will do a great job. We're counting on it, and hopefully he's able to retain that smile through the ups and downs of being the Director. So with that, I would ask for the Board's support on that appointment.
Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously with Commissioners Barowski and Moira absent. Malroni, sorry, totally blanked on that last name for a second. Excellent. Ricky, congratulations. Moving to Item 3, the promotion of Officer Catherine Reardon to the rank of Sergeant.
Hello, everyone. I'm Superintendent Chris Flanagan of the Radnor Township Police Department. I would like to open by welcoming everybody to this, what I consider a very important event, and it's an exciting time. Before we get started, I would like to thank the men and women in the back of the room, the Radnor Township Police Officers. We're very proud of them and the job they do. One of the things that goes on is, to get the best candidates, we have a competitive testing process, which is a rigorous written test and an oral test, and it takes a lot. And many people competed for this, and they all did a great job. They should be very proud of themselves. At the moment at hand, we have an open vacancy after the retirement of Sergeant Joe McGuire, who is one of our longest-running sergeants that we've had in the Police Department who currently serves, and is actually here tonight to celebrate his replacement, Officer Reardon, who will be promoted shortly to Sergeant. The Sergeant's position is, if you talk to police chiefs across the country, they will tell you that the Sergeant's position is one of the best jobs you will ever have. And I really do believe it, and I probably, I had my best times being a Sergeant. You still get to go to the good calls, you're still with the gang on the street, getting the job done, and you get to meet and make policy changes and other things. So it has a lot of different rewards without giving up anything. The sergeants are the first line of defense. The command staff cannot do their job without the Sergeant's support, because they are the voice from the managers, the commissioners, and the Chief of Police to the men and women who are out on the street, which is the backbone of the Police Department, the people you see on Christmas Eve, New Year's Day, driving around, you know, all over the township at all hours of the night and day, and that's what it's about. So it is a very important position, and I'm excited to be a part of this. Actually, one of my first promotions of a supervisor, so is very good as chief. Just like to give a quick picture of Officer Reardon. She is an eight-year veteran of the Radnor Township Police Department, after being hired in April of 2013. Prior to joining Radnor Police, she was a police officer for Darby Borough and for the Delaware County Sheriff's Department. She graduated LaSalle with a degree in American Studies and History. Sergeant Reardon demonstrated her talents as an acting sergeant, field training officer, and also assigned to the Delaware County Drug Task Force, where she conducted some very tough and demanding purchases for drugs and other things, and it's very dangerous work, plain and simple. And she performed to a very high standard, putting Radnor Police at the top of the list for the District Attorney, along with our other team members. Celebrating tonight, by her side is her husband, Anthony Salvatore, daughter Elena, stepdaughter Paige, sister Mary, and mother Irene Reardon. And I also promised I would give a shout-out to Nana, who is home watching. So I'd like to get to the business at hand, and if you would have your family come up, and I would turn it over to Judge.
All right. Raise your hand, please. Repeat after me. I, Catherine Reardon.
I, Catherine Reardon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States of America.
That I am a citizen of the United States of America.
That I will uphold the Constitution.
That I will uphold the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
That I will faithfully perform.
That I will faithfully perform.
All the duties of a police sergeant.
All the duties of a police sergeant.
Of Radnor Township.
Of Radnor Township.
And obey all orders.
And obey all orders.
From my superior officers.
From my superior officers.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Lang.
It's never easy putting these badges on, so there's no pressure. We like having our local district justices come out. They support this process, but also they see these officers and the people that Sergeant Reardon will be now managing, and thank Mr. White and the Commissioners for supporting this process and keeping it moving.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Okay, moving to our consent agenda. Are there any items that the Commissioners would like to pull?
Item F.
Color me shocked. I will move.
I'm sorry, and Item G.
Okay. I will move for passage of Item F, Resolution 2021-93, authorizing the purchase of Public Works capital vehicles and equipment, sanitation, packer $45,000 in a five-year capital lease, a dump truck for $37,000 in a five-year capital lease, a loader for $45,000 in a five-year capital lease, a street sweeper for $66,444 in a five-year capital lease, a clam bucket loader, no, a clam bucket for $20,000 in a CoStar's purchase, a pickup truck for $42,500 in a CoStar's purchase, a skid steer for $95,000 as a CoStar's purchase, walk-behind mower for $6,000 as a CoStar's purchase, a blower for $7,000 as a CoStar's purchase, all as noted in the 2021 approved budget. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ricky, this is probably you.
Yes, sir.
Why do you want all the good stuff?
Yeah, all of these items that are on here are actually replacement pieces. We have some of these items currently, but what happens is, take for instance, the loaders. One of the loaders, two of the loaders that we have, one is 2003 and the other is 2004, so we're trying to update the pieces of equipment as they begin to age and break down. So the easiest way to do that is incorporate it in the budget, and all of these items, the walk-behind mower, the blowers, the skid steer, the street sweeper, all of those things are aging pieces of equipment that we need to continue to do our job effectively. So that is what brings us to this point.
Is there any Commissioner comment?
Yeah, thanks, Ricky. I appreciate it, and I don't have a problem with the replacement items. My question's more around, we're going to get into budget season in a couple of weeks, and, you know, we're going to talk about, or we've talked about in the past couple of meetings, expanding the Public Works crew. Do we want to add a tree service component to Public Works? Well, I think to do that, the answer's not, shouldn't automatically be, let's just add personnel to staff. I think we need to really take a look at how do we modernize our workforce. I see communities around us using, on trash pickup day, they're using trucks that front-load, so they have one person, maybe two people on the truck. Do we want to go that route and have one or two people, and then we can take the additional people and put them onto public work, or put them onto parks where we know we have a lot of focus right now? So again, I don't have an issue with the item. I just wonder if, for some of the pieces, instead of doing a five-year lease, can we hold off right now until we have a discussion and look at how, how do we want to change, or do we want to change how the workforce looks in years ahead?
Well, I believe that in years past, they had looked at, take for instance, the trash truck method that you mentioned. I believe they had looked into that and saw if it was beneficial, and they decided to continue to go the route that they're going currently. As far as manpower, we're able to kind of move those around within the ranks, so to change that, I would like to say how things are, to be honest with you. I feel like everything is continuing to work out. We're still getting the work done, and even with the workforce that we have, we're able to also move those around within Public Works.
Any additional Commissioner comment? Any staff comment?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Because we are in budget time, and there are a lot of wants. Are any of these, this list, we're able to prolong for another year? I mean, are the dump trucks, is the dump truck that we're going to be leasing, I guess the lease is up, we don't own it? We're purchasing a lot of items. What's the lifespan of these items? How long have we used them? Can we get another year out of them? General questions like that.
Ricky, if I, I'll jump in, and then you can fill in any of the details, but all of these items are in service just about every single day, and they have been for, beyond their useful life. As we've talked about in the various years when we are going through the budget and stepping through the capital, these are items that are identified. And if you'll recall, we have the five-year capital plan where we are forecasting out the pieces of equipment and their replacement. What you have in front of you tonight is the list of, just a small list of the Public Works equipment that is scheduled up for this year. Ultimately, in almost every case, the assets are beyond their useful life. We're getting into situations, as Ricky pointed out with the loaders, that, you know, they're out of service, being repaired, which ultimately backs up other things that Public Works needs to do. So, you know, as we, internally, as we develop our five-year capital plan, I, well, we are asking equipment to be extended and asking to stretch out the lives of these pieces of equipment as often as we can. Only the pieces that need to be replaced are added to the schedule. Typically, in terms of timing, these are things that we would have bought earlier in the year, but this year especially, coming out of the impacts to our revenues from last year and the COVID shutdowns, we wanted to be sure that the business revenue came in at appropriate levels to make sure that we had the cash for these purchases. So we did that, and we've confirmed that, and as we've shared, that the business tax revenues did come in pretty good this, actually, much better than expected this year. So we're moving forward with these things. As Ricky pointed out, these are all items that are in service every day by the Public Works Department, doing all of the various things that they do. So in order to give the department the equipment they need to do their jobs that they're asked to do as efficiently as possible, we're asking that this list be approved. The one additional note with regard to the sanitation and the method of collection is that is something I know has been talked about for years. Internally, I just, I don't think the conversations ever made it up to the Board level, so that's probably an appropriate next step, where we take a look at the different routes and some of the challenges that the front-end or side-load trucks have in some of the neighborhoods of Radnor. But we have discussed that internally at length, and through the years, you know, the township has dropped the number of staff from trucks from three down to two in most cases, and are actually borrowing from other departments to make that happen on a lot of days. So the township's taken the first step of reducing staff where it can to minimize the cost of service. The next step in terms of the equipment and the potential efficiencies on the collection, there are some challenges to that that have been analyzed, but to be fair to the Commissioners, that has not been publicly discussed, just internally. So we'll add that to the list to be reviewed. In any event, it will take a few years to, if we were to implement those changes even on one or two of the routes, it will take some time. And with the seven different routes that we have now, in any given year, there's a truck that's up for replacement. So there'll be opportunities to swap out those trucks pretty much every year. So when the decision is made, one way or another, there'll be future pieces of equipment up for replacement, that decision can be altered at that point.
Thanks. One more quick question, Bill. We're looking at more than $100,000, $100,000, maybe, what, 70, $200,000 close? Can you just briefly just explain the bidding process, or how you go out and get these prices? Because it's not a formal bid, like if we're paving a road or something, just what your best practices are.
Sure. All of these items are, they are bid through the CoStar's process, so at the state, you know, the state level, they do a bidding for all these pieces of equipment. So they obtain their pricing that way, which satisfies the township's requirement for bidding. What we do competitively bid out is on all the lease items. We'll put out to, out through PennBid for the financial institutions to competitively bid on the interest rates, and then we'll go with the lowest and best on those items. So for each of the items that you see CoStar's purchase, those are pieces of equipment that were bid through the cooperative bidding process at the state level, of which we participate and benefit from quite often. But then we competitively bid the financial pieces on the capital leases.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment?
Well, one question. So do we want to talk about changing the methodology for trash?
I think it's a conversation we have to have in the context of, and not tonight, but in the context of expanding Public Works if we're looking to do other services. Again, my go-to isn't just to add staff, it's to look how to be efficient and find resources from within.
Well, right now, we're not looking to add staff. We're buying equipment, which we've previously budgeted for.
Yep, and I was just answering Commissioner Booker's question.
Understood.
I'll take that as something that you'll bring up at an appropriate time for another meeting if you choose.
Well, I think the manager said it's a conversation that he'll prepare and brief to the Commissioners.
Very, very good.
Let me call the vote. All in favor of Item 4F, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving to Item 4G, I will move for Resolution 2021-91, purchase of the NOx Key Secure 6 system for Radnor Township first responder vehicles. Is there a second?
Second.
Chief. Chief Flanagan, if I could bug you, I'm looking for info on the NOx Key Secure 6 system for the Radnor Township first responder vehicles.
Thank you, Commissioner. This was a concept we brought up, which related to emergency access for police, EMS, and fire. And it's actually a national program across the country, and it allows us quick access to different buildings that have multiple doors or only one door, where normally we would have to force entry or have a delay in assessing an alarm, a burglary, a medical emergency, to wait for somebody to come open up a door. They call it a key holder, who would respond. We have teamed up with the firehouses under the coordination of Sergeant Gluck, our Officer Officer of Emergency Management Coordinator, and come up with a system that holds a high level of accountability and function for us and the responders. And I will turn it over to him for any... And I will turn it over to him for any questions. This final process is the actual purchase to what we had brought before the commissioners, where we need to put the equipment inside the vehicles so that we can get a police, fire, and EMS into the buildings.
Why is there not a number listed of how much it's going to cost?
The resolution says $34,125,000.
Good evening, Commissioner. The price was included in legislation to see. Give you a quick presentation on what exactly it is. You can press whatever you'd like, it's not going to work in any way, shape, or form. So we had discussed before the the NOX program, and I know there was concerns about where this information goes to, how we keep track of who uses the key and when. The NOX program is a patented trademark program that is owned by NOX. There is no middleman, there is no vendor, there is no one else to go through, police, fire, EMS, and federal government, state government facilities, all purchased directly through NOX themselves. So there is no one else that can get involved with your access points or your keys or knowledge about how access is made to these boxes on the buildings. Just so you know, NOX was created in 1975, it's based out of Phoenix, Arizona. They developed the entire system, their system's made here in the USA, and it's used by over 15,000 police, fire, EMS agencies, to include state and federal agencies as well. What you see before you is an actual NOX box, a small version, which is what we would expect to have on buildings. In the front is the key tumbler. The current ones have a mechanical key, which I'll show you in just a second. And the new version we're trying to go to has this E-key, which is what I passed around to each one of you. I'm just going to play a short video just to show you exactly how this audits and keeps the information.
NOX has developed the first complete electronic rapid-access system for use in the fire service.
As the firefighters arrive on the scene, they realize they have a NOX box at that location. They can enter their code in the Key Secure 6.
That will release the NOX key. The NOX E-key, then, you have an identification code you enter into that device, you would attach it to the front of the lock.
We get the green light, we turn the key and open the box up, and that gives us full access. The advantage to the E-key is that it'll store up to 100 codes.
That means 100 different departments could share one key. There's no need to have multiple mechanical keys now.
Having the ability to share it with multiple agencies really expands our coverage and how quickly we can resolve emergency situations.
The E-key has a unique audit trail stored in the cloud. So anytime someone activates a key, it will know exactly who took the key, the date, the time, and it would know the date and time the key was returned. If the key is lost, it will deactivate after a certain set period of time.
For a business owner, it should be even more peace of mind knowing that no one can get a hold of these keys and enter their business at any time.
Almost.
So just so you see the difference, the mechanical key on the left is what we currently use with the fire departments, they have access to it now. The E-key, just like I passed around to you, holds its own code specific to the departments. So in the video, if you notice, the system, the Key Secure 6 system we're looking to purchase is what would be in the vehicle, it's secured in the vehicle. Each person who would have access to it has their own identifying code, and then that person would also have to know the code to put into the E-key to make it work. So the key itself actually energizes the tumbler that's inside this NOX box. So at no point is there any electronics whatsoever unless there is a bank or an organ that you have to test, a bank or pharmaceutical application, business that requires an tamper sword to be attached to the alarm system. So basically, what we're doing is, we're creating a system here that's used by many other departments, but it creates the audit trail so we know who used what and when. And then we can also take that same E-key and go back to any box that has that electronic tumbler, and we can actually draw the information from here many, many years from now. So we can give that business owner a peace of mind to say, here's exactly what happened at your business and how many people accessed it and who and when. And we also get that notification when it does take place. We're also going to do a redundancy program where anytime the key is removed, either the police, fire, EMS must do a report to note that, so we can connect the audit trail and do basically a balance and check on everything. This is the actual system that would go in the vehicle. The code's at the top, the smaller key is the mechanical key, which is secure in there, cannot be removed, as well as the E-key. And this is the NOX Connect software, which is cloud-based, and is the information that can create the reports. The Emergency Management Coordinator, myself, will be responsible for this program and providing secure access and the audits of the system itself. And if, in the future, we would like to allow this to go to some residential locations, there's a lot of locations here in the township that actually have gates which block their access to the driveway, we could have the same E-key situation for emergencies to access those systems. And that's it. Do we have any commissioner comment? You got, you have some?
I've said my 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 piece, my opinion about this, I understand it helps your job. I just think that there's a a true, an issue of possibly, you know, unlawful search and seizure. Not to say I don't think that you guys are corrupt or the fire, I just, it's a slippery slope, and once you say, you can go into my business, what's next, my house? This should not be mandatory, if the business wants to do it, they should be allowed to. You shouldn't require someone to put the keys to their establishment outside their their establishment. I've, I mean, I busted many safes myself. I buy storage lockers, I find them, I can get into them in anywhere from 20 minutes to an hour, depending on how tough they are. But I can get into them. I could take a sledgehammer easily, knock that off the wall, get a crowbar or get something and pop that thing up and probably have that in an hour. It just sends the wrong message to Big Brother, in my opinion. I thank you for what you do, I want you to be safe, I want other people to be safe. I just can't support it.
Thanks, Sean. I can't open any safe, I don't, I don't know how to do that, even if you give me an hour. But I just, can we discuss? So to that point, what are the safeguards, if any, that we have? I believe that Sean's correct that this is mandatory, I guess, for certain residents. But are there any safeguards? Or is it just part of the policies of the of the police and fire that that provide the safeguards and privacy of this, of the people, that they wouldn't, this would never be used in anything other than an emergency situation?
Well, this was passed per the ordinance, I believe it was July 13th of 2020, that we asked the folks to put these on their businesses.
Right, but are, so there's no safeguards to make sure that? So specifically, what are the police doing to ensure that no one would ever use these for anything other than an emergency? Is there anything?
So the purpose of the whole thing, we would have a policy and a procedure, but the the purpose is to have access to the emergency contact information as well as the keys. We would only take the the action of entering the property without someone being there if we've exhausted that emergency contact list. And you have to remember, this is also beyond even us, our county dispatch also holds emergency contact information. So if we do need to get into somewhere for an emergency reason, we're going to exhaust every aspect of it, unless there's absolute danger to someone's life. So when we have the businesses on North Wayne Avenue or on 100 Block of East or even in Garrett Hill, if one to catch, were to catch fire in the middle of the night, we wouldn't want the fire to expand to the next buildings. So the fire department would methodically do what they needed to do in order to keep everyone safe.
Right, and I think everyone agrees that in a fire or an emergency situation, that the police should have access. So I wonder how effective this is going to really be? In the case of an emergency, you might even confuse the procedures, or should I check the list? Is, is this a situation that calls for us to immediately take action without going to the lockbox, without going through the system to get the keys? Couldn't you be actually slowing down a emergency responder by having this extra layer of procedure that they need to memorize and be afraid of being second-guessed on?
I don't think so at all, sir. That's the reason we have the code, that's our own personal code, they know how, they'll be trained on how to access the system in a timely manner to do what they need to do, and every situation's different.
Right, so again, the issue is, you're you're asking for an emergency responder to make the call on to whether they break in to save property or a person, or whether they go through emergency lists and procedures to get the key. And.
Those decisions we make now, sir. We make those decisions today, without this system.
Without the system?
Yes. Emergency situations, we're all trained in what we need to do. And every situation's different. This is just an added layer for auditing, to make sure that we know it was used properly, and if it wasn't, we can see who did so, which access is not really going to be easily accessible in general.
Well, how do we know, how do we stop, how do, what safeguards are in place to make sure that it's not used improperly?
So the key itself, the E-key, you set a timer for it, so when it's released, after that, it goes dead. You could throw it anywhere you want, it's not going to do anything, it won't access any box anywhere, anytime. It has to be reignited into the system when it's placed back into that Key Secure 6 docking system. So either if that key gets lost, it's not going to do anything for anyone. That's why we'd like to move forward to the E-key system as opposed to the mechanical key system we have right now. And even so, no one would know where that mechanical key works. So we do have safeguards in place, we do know who would access it, we do know when, we do know when it was returned, and I can even go to the business if the E-key core is in it, I can go back to them and at their request, I can print them out an entire documentation to show when and who used their box itself.
Do you have any kind of numbers on when we have an emergency and we go through this process versus when we have the people have an emergency and they they bypass the emergency list, the contact?
I don't, sir, I'd have to refer you to the fire department for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this solely for emergency use, not for example, serving a warrant?
This is for emergency uses. I wouldn't think that we would need to use this type of system. It's not on a residence where we normally would do those things, it's on a commercial property. We'd still have to serve some things. So I wouldn't, this would not be my first step. We would go through the legal aspects.
Would you then just go to this box and gain access?
As that situation.
One of the things I'd like to point out just before I answer your question, Commissioner, is Commissioner Booker, I think, brought up a good point that I'd like to highlight to the board and the community. We also have been given the responsibility of trying to access multi-multi-occupancy facilities throughout Radnor Township, including some of our schools, where they've actually wanted to have a key. We've had to give keys, when we first started school response, to every car, put it on your keychain, we have these belts, we usually clip them on, and it has become an over, it it's too much of a management system to keep all those keys, we don't want to have them. This would allow us to eliminate all of the previous keys, return them back, let the property owner maintain the highest level of information, and they could put more information in there such as drawing, or building drawings, other things for the fire department. If we had a tactical operation for us, we're actually working with Mr. Kachansky in the Codes Department, they're going to conduct inspections on these. And that's when we made that presentation, and this this is just that final implementation phase where we want to purchase them. We had to put it on hold due to COVID, we've met with Mr. Tate, Mr. White, and we're asking for that final phase. In reference, Commissioner Agnew, to your question, we we don't, we would not use any entry that would be different than we do now for an arrest warrant. There are exigent circumstances where all of they would be signed by a judge prior to action, but this is not something that we use, and we prefer not to ever enter a building unless there's app, unless somebody really ran into somewhere and we needed to get him, and it would be exigent circumstances, they had a weapon. So for a general warrant or other things, we would not use the NOX box system to get in there. Also, besides for multi-b buildings, we also have individual suites within different office complexes. This would allow us not to force doors in those respective places during, say, a CO emergency or carbon dioxide emergency for the fire department or a medical emergency. We've actually gone to the Corporate Center on Matson's Ford Road where we can't get in a suite, and if this, the maintenance people aren't there, we've had to, you know, break large glass doors. Commissioner Booker also brought up, they are commercial doors, this is focused on commercial, can expand to private voluntarily. If somebody wants to get one of these, they can come and get one and and have us have access to their property or not get their gate. But commercial-grade doors, such as here in Township, are fire-rated, and they're much tougher and stronger. Kevin Kachansky could probably expand on that, including the glass in hallways in buildings. So some of these things really hamper everybody. So there is a true value to having the access, where it would actually speed the total product, not slow it. And I thank Commissioner Booker for bringing that up.
Can I just ask one more? Sorry, Kathy, because this this is going to relate to you. So the fire departments would have these keys as well, correct? Am I correct?
Fire department does have these keys.
The fire, the fire department is not a government agency, okay? The fire department is not our police, the fire department is not our public works. The fire department is a third party that is very similar to the government, but it's not, we fund them. So we are giving keys, businesses are forced to give their keys to entities that are not true government entities. And that is scary, that is a slippery slope that I think we all need to watch.
Okay, I'm just going to remind everyone that the ordinance, which makes it required to have these boxes on buildings, has already passed. The only thing that we're talking about now is whether we are going to give our police, who are a government agency, the access to those boxes, which businesses and multifamily residentials are required to put out. So there are people who are under the impression right now that they're going to have additional police protection, because I've gone to the steps required to put these boxes out. If we do not fund them, as we said we would in the legislation that we have already passed, they will not get the protection that they imagined they had. We've been talking about this for a while, we have not even finished Consent Agenda, it's 7:24. Guys, last question, then let's wrap it up. Is there any staff comment? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All oppose, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes, four to two. Thank you very much. I will move for the balance of the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. I'm sorry, I need a second, is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Consent Agenda passes with the exception of items F and G, which passed previously unanimously. Moving on to item 5A, committee reports, the appointment of William Lawler to Carfac for an non-expired term ending December 31, 2022. I will so move, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any commissioner comment?
So I would just like to make, sorry, a quick comment. First, I'd like to apologize to leadership and the residents for, and my board colleagues for being late this evening. I had a death in the family and was at a funeral. I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Foster and Sergeant Riordan on their appointments this evening. So thank you very much, and I apologize for missing those votes. I would definitely like to speak up for Mr. Lawler's appointment to Carfac. I've worked with Mr. Lawler for the past three years as a member, he has served on the the library board, and I think he would be a fantastic representative for our township on Carfac, given his breadth of expertise and in the financial world. And he is, I think, one who really cares about our township, and will bring, take both those, those, both those things and marry them together as he works for us on Carfac. So I would definitely support Mr. Lawler's appointment.
Any staff comment? Any public comment? I'll call the vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Moving on to resolution, sorry, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to 5B, resolution 2021-
Moving on to 5B, Resolution 2021-97, 401 East Lancaster Avenue, final minor subdivision plan. Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening. You've already shown us the plan, as my recollection is that you were joining the two lots on the American Legion post on Lancaster Avenue.
Correct. Yes, sir.
And I'm just going to preempt Commissioner Booker here, give you the third degree a little bit. What is your devious plan that you are trying to do here?
A few decades ago, I believe in 1941, there was property that had been bought and then sold, and then given back to the American Legion. There is a property line, because there were two lots, we just want to erase that and make it one lot. So, paperwork-wise, it's less for us, paperwork-wise, it's less for you. We pay one bill instead of two bills.
That is insufficiently devious, I don't know if I can support it.
You know, Jack, I really resent, the question is, why, what is the paperwork that you're saving? So, basically, what you're saying is, instead of paying two tax bills, you'll now pay one tax bill.
That's one thing.
Doesn't matter.
So, what else, what else, what else is there?
There's a possibility of expanding from our building, whether it be a deck or some other part that would possibly go over that property line. So, we need, we'll clear property line, or we'd be back here again asking to build, own two lots.
So, basically, it's to change the building envelope for possible expansion of the facility?
Possibly.
So, that's, the question was, Jack, I resent your implication.
Very devious. Any additional?
And that was the first time we heard that, so thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. So, there is no other purpose, it's not, I know you've assigned Land Rover, or you have a little parking, and all that sort of thing, and there's new residential spaces being built, it's going to ideas not to rent, sell, or lease your space to somebody else for other purposes.
Not where the line is, no.
Well, okay, not where the line is, but is that an intention?
It's a, it's a possibility.
It's a possibility, so that's part of why we're with you. Is that, so this is the first step along that line? Because this does directly impact?
Well, it does, ma'am, but the portion that we would be possibly talking about leasing is nowhere near the property line where it would be an issue. It would be on the outside, on the eastern side, where Emerson is. So, it has nothing to do, that line down the middle, on the western part and the eastern part of the Legion part, has nothing to do with those plans.
So, it's not, you sort of, it's maybe a square, you sold the property and...
There's no selling of the property.
Sorry?
We're not selling the property, ma'am.
Ever?
Can't say ever, but as long as I'm commander right now, it's not going to be...
So, there's no thought that you've never approached me?
I can't, they've never approached me, ma'am.
No one's approached you?
Not that I can say.
You say not, you say, you don't know?
I don't know, because I am just the new commander, I've been in for a month.
Have you required?
I have not, no.
Because I won't reiterate what directly across the, or, what I'm indicating?
Oh, I understand, I understand where we are, ma'am.
So, if there were planning out there, that maybe you're unaware of, would the lines be, have a sound sound review, please?
A what review, ma'am? What does that mean?
Subdivision and land development authority.
Okay. There's, we have nothing to hide, ma'am, we just want to take both of our properties that we own and consolidate them and erase an invisible line.
Then that's...
Right now, yes.
There's a building, that building, or that building, or that...
A deck, probably not, but any kind of building, expansion of the building.
And I apologize, I want to clarify, we're not expanding any of the building, there would be no plans for the building to be expanded, if there was anything that we agreed upon and decided on what to do.
And if it's something less than that, there would...
It would be, it would be a deck if it was agreed upon.
If there's something less than a building, if there's impervious, they would have to do stormwater management.
We've already covered that as well.
And again, if you wanted to lease any fraction of your property, it feels like you'd be better suited to not join it, because you would be able to say, we'll just lease this parcel over here.
It's not the whole parcel, it'll be a portion, sir.
Whatever you want to do, the more you want to divide up the use of the property, the better situation you're in if you do not...
I understand that, sir, but I don't make the decisions myself.
It's fine by me. You meet the requirements, we really don't get to inquire into your motives, it's...
Thank you, sir.
Just if you take, take the boxes. Do we have any staff comment? Do we have any public comment? I'm going to call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay.
Abstain.
Five to one abstention, I guess, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to item 5E, Ordinance 2021-07, Introduction, Amending Chapter 280 of the Radnor Township Code, zoning ordinance by permitting an increase in building height in the Garrett Hill neighborhood, GHN, in Garrett Hill, Garrett Avenue, GHGA districts. In addition, outdoor dining would be permitted in the Garrett Hill, Conestoga Road, GHCR district. I will so move, is there a second?
I will second.
Commissioner comment?
We should ask John, do you want to, or Kevin? I mean, I'm happy to speak, but I think that this was worked by both you, Kevin, and John, so I'd like to hear your input before, before we speak.
Absolutely, thank you, Commissioner. This ordinance addresses two items for the Garrett Hill zoning district overlay. It addresses a building height issue to increase the building height by five feet in the Garrett Hill, Garrett Avenue district, as well as the Garrett Hill neighborhood district, as well as provide for outdoor dining in the Garrett Hill, Conestoga Road district. Basically refers back to the regular outdoor dining provisions, provisions of the zoning ordinance with some modifications to the setbacks due to the close nature of the buildings and the properties down in Garrett Hill. This was previously in front of this board for authorization to send to the county and township planning commissions. In your packet, there is a memo from the Delaware County Planning Commission dated July 15, 2021, with the recommendation, as well as it was in front of the Township Planning Commission at their July 13 meeting, and the recommendation is also included in the board's packet. And that we are asking for this ordinance to be introduced, and a hearing be scheduled for October 18 for consideration of adoption.
Kevin, can you summarize or highlight any issues in those two letters you just described?
I believe that the, I'll start with the Township Planning Commission. I believe that they recommended it as submitted. The Radnor Township Planning Commission convened on July 13, 2021. The planning commission reviewed the above referenced item as presented by staff. Planning commission voted eight to zero, recommending that the Board of Commissioners approve the amendment as written for outdoor dining and 35-foot, 35-foot height maximum. Was there something, before I jump to the county review, that...
I just wanted you to highlight any, anything you thought was important in either of these, either of these two letters.
No, I believe that the county seemed to be supportive as well. They did note that there were some changes to the setbacks and sought some clarification. We intentionally provided the setbacks from the property line, from the outdoor dining area to the adjacent single-family detached residential building versus the property line. Again, as I noted before, because of the close proximity, otherwise, outdoor dining could be precluded in the Garrett Hill. So, we worded it specifically for that. So, I don't see any issues with the county review, it's their comments and consideration, but as written, we feel that is appropriate.
Sorry, they're concerned about being too close to the street with the diner?
About the clarification of the setbacks and how it's measured.
One of the other things, it's, Rich, it's important, is that the, the outdoor dining, you have an existing, pretty extensive list of requirements for outdoor dining in your current ordinance, it applies in all the other districts. We're adding Garrett Hill. So, all those other criteria, the only thing we're modifying really is the setback because of the nature of the property. So, the other criteria about ingress and egress, pedestrian barriers, design review board, furniture, all those other things are still in place. They're not being...
They're incorporated by reference?
Yeah, they're not, they're not being modified. I know the setback, there were some questions about it, but, you know, to increase a setback, you're basically then killing the concept of outdoor dining because of the way that district is. So, it's 100 feet in WBOD, it's, we're reducing it to 50 in this district. Your planning commission didn't have an issue with it, but the rest of the criteria are still going to apply. Exterior heating systems, all of that is still going to apply.
Were there any comments on height? Or are we...
I, the county, nothing really from the county, other than to point out what the current requirement is. Most of their comments were on the outdoor dining. I don't think the Township Planning Commission had any issue with the increase in the height. It's 35 feet everywhere else in the township.
And I guess one other question with, well, two questions. One, it seems like outdoor dining, the expansion of outdoor dining is going to be a permanent thing for not just Radnor, but everywhere across the country, as people have gotten more used to it, I guess, from COVID lockdowns. Sorry about that, I, I thought I turned this off. Is that a consideration that you agree with, or is there some sense that we will at some point go back to normal and have, no longer have any of these temporary outdoor, or we'll scale back to where we were in 2019 with respect to outdoor dining?
I think that the regulations that allowed, the resolution that this board passed to allow for temporary outdoor dining and the expansion of that, as well as outdoor sales, was a great benefit to the community, and I think it served a great purpose for the permanent outdoor dining in Garrett Hill. And I'm not aware of any complaints that I've received from the establishment in Garrett Hill that took advantage of it. I think it will eventually sunset and those expansions will expire, but this will bring Garrett Hill up to speed with the rest of Wayne and Radnor Township in terms of allowing it at every other food establishment. So, I think that this just brings the Garrett Hill restaurants up to par with the other food establishments in the township.
Yeah, I guess my sense of it is, is that it'll never go back to where it was, and if that is the case, that makes this, that, it makes this more appropriate adjustment. In other words, codifying outdoor dining in a new area is consistent with the trend that seems to be permanent based on COVID-19 lockdown restrictions and other emergency provisions that have been put in place. Does anybody disagree with that, or does it, have any comment on that?
I would agree with that. You see a lot of municipalities, and I don't know if their regulatory agencies have permitted these permanently or for, under similar provisions that our resolution does for a temporary, but a lot of parking spaces being reclaimed, whether they're on-street parking for outdoor dining. Been to plenty of boroughs where there is a huge expansion of these outdoor dining areas, and they seem to be very popular, and it's bringing people into the outdoors, whether it's a comfort level or just a nice amenity to have in these smaller towns to improve the streetscape. And I think that this is something that is here to stay. People are enjoying it, and it's a welcome revitalization of these areas.
There's plenty of them in Philadelphia, I mean, it's not just small towns, it's big, it's everywhere, so. Are there any concerns, John, that you would have with the, the height as it pertains to either safety or, is there anything that comes into play that would be of concern in any area that you could think of?
Because of the height? No. I mean, 35 feet is what it's going to, is what it is in every municipality in southeast Pennsylvania. So, you know, unless you have a, and this was a, this is a unique district, and the 30 feet at the time, I think, was thought to be consistent with existing homes, but 35 feet is, is pretty standard. It doesn't impact any firefighting abilities or any other safety issues that come to my mind. Not, not that I'm a safety expert on height, but it's a standard height for buildings in zoning ordinances.
Is there any concern with this change that it will need to be extended to more than this area? Is there any kind of follow-on that will come from this with respect to height?
Everywhere else is 35 feet or more, correct, Kevin?
Every other district in the township is 35 feet or more to the midpoint of the roof. Our code for Garrett Hill was, in many of the districts, was 30 feet to the ridge, which is halfway, further up the roof versus halfway. This is bringing 35 feet to the ridge, so these are still less in height, total height, than you see everywhere else in the township. So, I don't anticipate any safety issues, because if a emergency service provider can reach a 35 foot to the midpoint, they could reach 35 foot to the ridge.
All right, Commissioner Booker, are you finished?
Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else want to go? Okay. So, I just have a couple of questions. You know, we had, I think, last month, a group of residents who lived in a certain area over on Clover Lane came to us and wanted us to do a special overlay, and whatnot, and we are working with them on some more specific, I think, adjustments that can be made to their residents, the residents in order to protect and preserve the uniqueness of that neighborhood. And I, it's my understanding, and I was not around when the Garrett Hill overlay was conceived and, and worked on, it's my understanding, it was about a two-year process that happened and certainly grew out of our comprehensive plan at the time, which certainly needs to be updated, I know we're talking about that, and hopefully that, we'll be moving forward with that in our next, in our next budget. But, one of the things, and I pulled this out when we were talking about the other prior concerns, was that one of the things in our current, although very dated, comprehensive plan is to maintain and protect the many residential neighborhoods that make the township such a unique community. And I think that that was the intent, at least my understanding from those who were involved with the process, that was the intent of the, of the overlay. So, and, you know, I understand that things change, you know, neighbors change, building owners change, and, and people, you know, sometimes want change, and that's not a bad thing. But, I guess I just want to understand what the impact of that change might be on a community, when one of the things specifically that they were looking at was around parking. So, when it comes to parking and the height of the buildings, it's my understanding that one of the concerns is that because parking, residential parking is so limited in that area, the height of the buildings brings, I guess, potentially more cars, the need for more people to park. So, my question, it was going to be around parking with regards to the height, as well as the outdoor dining. And I'd like to understand what the outdoor dining, the outdoor dining requirements are as it comes over, comparing it to the Wayne Business District when it comes to parking. And I'd also like to understand that the outdoor, what the outdoor dining means is that supplemental outdoor dining, and, and I am a fan of outdoor dining, I prefer to dine outdoors now, so, unless it's raining. So, I'm a fan of outdoor dining, but I'd like to understand what that means, is that simply moving tables that are already inside, capacity from inside outside, or is that additional capacity? And if that's the case, where is that parking going to go? We know that Garrett Hill, the parking there is very tight. I've heard people say that people are allowed to park in that Rosemont, I guess, office... I've heard people say that people are allowed to park in that Rosemont, I guess, office complex there, but then I've heard other people say there are signs there that say you can't park there. So where does, where do we go with the parking? How does that get accommodated? What does that mean for the residential streets in the area? So those are my questions. That's a lot of questions.
May I just, may I just follow on to that point? That's, the question is, wouldn't it necessarily be an expansion of, of capacity and therefore necessarily an increase? So if it's not an expansion of capacity, that, please explain why it wouldn't be?
I can answer, I think, most of those questions, or at least give a stab at answering those. First, with regards to parking in the building height, we're talking an increase of five feet in the overall building height. There are still other protections in the Garrett Hill District Regulations, such as a percentage of the third floor, floor area that is habitable as compared to the second floor. I think that the building height will only serve to provide better utilization of the third floor and not provide any significant increase in square footage up there. And again, that's already regulated under the percentage, I believe, in the Garrett Hill, Garrett Avenue. There's a 60% of the third floor can only, I'm sorry, the third floor can only be 60% of the, the second floor floor area. And there's still provisions in there for the minimum and maximum roof pitches. So all of those other parameters that are already built into the code for reasons of limiting how big these buildings can be are already providing that protection. So I don't see any increase in parking requirements with respect to the building height issue. I think it's just going to provide property owners who choose to go through a renovation project to possibly provide a little bit better utilization of the third floor, which already exists. Regarding parking and the outdoor dining, outdoor dining is set up to structure for the first 12 spaces are free, I'm sorry, the first 12 seats are free, so you don't have to provide any parking, and that is for outdoor dining township-wide. Thereafter, seats 13 through 24 are parked at a reduced rate, one space for every four seats, and then seats 25 through 50, and there's a cap at 50. Again, this is all township-wide, outdoor dining, are parked at the regular restaurant rates. So outdoor dining is limited to 25% of your indoor capacity, so if, to maximize 50 seats, you'd have to have 200 indoor seats. So whatever your indoor seat regulations are, 25% of that is what you're allowed to put outside. Up to 12, you wouldn't have to provide for parking, and then again, there's that graduated parking ratio thereafter.
So in your opinion, Mr. Kachansky, is there enough parking in Garrett Hill currently to accommodate the outdoor dining?
If I were to take a stab at it, I would say that most of the businesses, and we see this throughout the township really, because there's not a, a gluttony of extra parking on private, on these private properties, that they're going to be very limited. So, you know, you're probably not going to see many applications coming in that exceed the number of spaces for, number of seats at 12. So it's, we're going to be ancillary. This issue was top, talked extensively at Planning Commission, and two Planning Commission members spoke up and said that they're more inclined to walk versus drive, and that's what we envision this type of outdoor dining be, is an amenity for the neighbors, that we're be more inclined to walk there, given the limited parking versus driving and creating additional traffic.
Again, thank you for all that information, but my question is going to be, is there enough parking to accommodate the additional outdoor dining? Because I, I think when we first, this first came to us and we sent it to planning for them to review and to consider, or sent it to staff, I'm sorry, to, to craft a new, a new ordinance, it, my concern at that time was the parking, can the, and I, and also the seating, and I asked, is it supplanting what's inside, so just moving tables outside, still the same capacity? But I feel like tonight I'm hearing, no, it's additional capacity. So if the parking was tight to begin with, how, how is the parking not going to be tighter? And not having to assume that people might walk or people might do? If everybody comes, is there parking? Yes or no?
Again, I think it's, it depends on each site. I don't know, and having done detailed studies of each specific site to see what their parking requirements are versus the parking demands versus what is existing on-site. I can say that the ordinance does not require parking for the first 12 seats. My guess is that there was very limited capacity to provide additional parking. And these types of things, given that it is a, and we see this down in Wayne, although we do have public lots down there, it drives the, because it's so close to the neighborhood fabric of, of the, the community, that you're going to get more people walking to these types of things versus driving and not having parking for it. My gut is telling me that most of the restaurants down there now are underparked versus overparked, and they are still managing to, you know, drive business in, and this is more of an amenity. I don't see outdoor dining driving a significant flow of parking needs for these restaurants.
So given that we seem to be, you know, kind of assuming, and we haven't done any sort of like real parking assessment or study or anything like that, would it be acceptable to do something like that around the current ordinance that we are considering this evening? Extend the ability for there to continue to be outdoor dining under the, or do they still have that ability to have the outdoor dining? It seems like they still do, so whether this ordinance is there or not, would it be possible to, you know, continue to allow them to do the outdoor dining and then do a parking assessment just to make sure that we're not creating a, a potential situation that is going to become a nuisance to neighbors and things like that?
The current resolution for temporary outdoor dining, I believe, expires at the end of November unless extended by this board, so there is a, a sunset date for that, but that could be extended at, at this board. I'll defer the legality to that to the solicitor. You know, beyond that, those issues came up when we looked at expanding outdoor dining from Wayne to township-wide, exclusive of the Garrett Hill, and those same concerns were raised. And ultimately, the number was driven at 12 seats per establishment was a comfortable level that we didn't feel was going to create a, a huge parking demand or an issue into the neighborhoods that surrounded those commercial establishments throughout the township. So we carried those, that philosophy forward with, with this amendment and really didn't change that.
So this ordinance is not only allowing for outdoor dining, it's also increasing capacity as well?
Without any additional parking, you would expect to see up to 12 seats per establishment.
Thank you.
Jack, just, oh, sorry, Kathy, go. No, I'm not plugged in, so I don't know what to say about that. Can you hear me? Yes. Kevin, can you hear me? Mr. Kachansky? Okay. Sure. How's that, Mr. Kachansky? Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay. So there was something in the ordinance that I, I thought was a little peculiar, and it was that the, the buffer, right, the protection, was for single-family homes. Is that correct?
Correct. Single-family detached homes.
Detached, I'm sorry, single-family detached. Why not all residences as opposed to just single-family? There's a lot of twins in Garrett Hill. I, I'm just confused of why it's only single-family detached.
We looked at the existing establishments down there and tried to, you know, see where we could reasonably put, you know, first we started with the setbacks that were under the base outdoor dining, and that basically excluded outdoor dining from occurring with the setbacks from the property line to the outdoor dining area. So we tried to create a delicate balance between what we knew was down there and provide some protection, provided that the outdoor dining was on the same property. So when you start looking at the individual properties and the setbacks, we didn't feel it was an issue for the single-family attached, and it was really just the, this single-family detached building that's in, back behind Garrett Hill Ale House. We wanted to provide some buffering protection from that with the setback, so that's kind of why we derived that. We didn't see that there was any impact if outdoor dining was provided on those other establishments to the single-family attached properties.
So why not include them?
We just, we didn't see that that was a need to create a regulatory requirement for something that we didn't see as an issue at the time.
So you're not opposed to, or someone's not opposed to including that it's all residences or whether it's detached or unattached or?
That would be, you know, at, at the discretion of this body, it's, you know, part of the introduction process to, to look at the regulations. I don't see it as a particular issue. When you get down Fitzwilliams, it changes zoning districts from Garrett Hill, Conestoga Road to R5, so outdoor dining couldn't be provided on those properties behind Flippin' Bailey's, and then you're dealing then with the Ale House and Conestoga Pizza, and there's a single-family that is behind there, so ultimately we were trying to provide protection for that. Across Garrett Avenue is a series of single-family attached units, and those are all student housing. And again, they're, they're set back, once you get the, between the building and the right-of-way of Garrett Avenue, they're set back pretty far as well. So it, it met that requirement because of the road, so we just didn't, for the Garrett Hill Ale House, want to see the outdoor dining encroaching further back into that parking lot, which is why we included it in that provision there.
One of the, one of the things that, if the setback gets increased or you include it all residential, you will basically kill outdoor dining. I mean, permit it, but the setback because of the nature of the uses that are there is such that no one will be able to do it. So if you're going to make that call, that's the effect of it. I, I suppose they could go to the zoning hearing board and get a variance, but, you know, that's rolling the dice anytime you go to the zoning hearing board. So just, there's a lot of zoning regulations, and we went through this with, with billboards and where it seems to make sense to have these large setbacks, but if the effect is that you prohibit the use, you need, you need to be aware of that. And I think the 100 feet or the setback from all residential uses would prohibit the use. And that's what, as I recall, Kevin, that was our discussion when you looked at the, the actual uses that were out there.
We looked at the uses compared to the existing restaurants there and seeing how the impact was in the setbacks, you know, the single-family attached that are across Garrett Avenue were already separated by the right-of-way, and then the setback between the right-of-way and those buildings effectively was 50 feet or greater. So the concern was seeing how far or what the comfort level was of outdoor dining area behind the Yale House, encroaching back into that rear parking area, because there's a single-family detached building back there. It may be a student rental, but it was still a single-family, so we were trying to provide some protection for that immediately adjacent property.
Kevin, since, since this ordinance update was, was crafted, have you participated in any neighborhood town hall meetings?
I don't recall that I did. I don't know if Commissioner Farah held one privately, but I don't recall there being one that staff was involved in, outside of the public meetings.
Okay. I mean, and to, so to follow on to Commissioner Agnew's question, if you're creating special exceptions to allow for outdoor dining and it's, it could impact these twins or duplexes, you know, it'd be nice to hear what the residents feel who, who live directly in that, in that area. So, I mean, and I, I could get behind this, but, but I would like to see some public process with, with some neighborhood meetings. And Commissioner Farah, this isn't a surprise, like, I mean, ordinance changes, like, I, you know, I, I hold myself to that standard. I, I wouldn't do anything if, if I don't talk to the neighbors. Okay. All right.
You're up.
I'm listening.
Okay. So I have about 15 points. I'm going to try to go through them fairly quickly. The overlay, when it was created years ago, one of the unintended consequences, and I don't believe was intentional, but by the Garrett Hill Coalition, but it is textbook case of what I believe and what I feel, and I'm going to start off with by saying it's institutional racism. You take a high-minority street, you restrict the height, restricting growth and the ability to increase the property value, and to me, that is the definition of institutional racism. Boxwood, it's a million-dollar street, that has character. I live on Rockingham. Rockingham has twins and single-family homes. That has character. All streets have character. They all have their own character. The residents who own in the overlay will also not be able to see as much property appreciation of those who live outside the overlay. Their properties do not increase as much as their peers. When the restrictive owners sell, they will have less purchasing power. Your home mortgage, your mortgage is probably your biggest expense, at least it is for me. My house is my biggest investment. It's only fair that the people that live in this restrictive overlay, when they sell, they're allowed to fully appreciate the value of their house. Now, our planning commission voted unanimously, unanimously in favor as written. Getting to the point about the character, they even went so far saying that five feet would not affect the character of the neighborhood. It's just five feet. The homes still look the same, it's five feet. Many houses on that street are actually 35 street because they were in there prior, prior to, and they were grandfathered in. Our planning committee voted 8-0 unanimously for this. Delaware County voted in favor of this. Now, this is just for the restricted part of the overlay. I want to talk about the parking and the parking situation. If you have new construction or you have homeowners that want to add on to their house, their properties are going to appreciate, and I think that's good for everybody. If someone sells a house and they build a new house, they knock it down or gut it or build a new house, typically you have less college kids there. You have more families. Families have less cars. I get calls all the time from the residents on Garrett Avenue, as well as the other streets, saying, "I see 15 cars from universities. I know that they're university students because they have Connecticut plates, New York plates, and Villanova stickers on it." I'm actually not here to say anything bad about Villanova tonight. They do their best when it comes to that situation. But less college kids and less college houses, right? If you have three, the maximum three, and their boyfriends or girlfriends stay over, you may have five cars. I don't know. I think that a house with a family may have two, maybe three if they're, have a kid in high school that has a car. So I think parking would actually be better. The other thing that we need to look at, which is my sixth point, is as much as we love these small homes and they're quaint, and I get it, 1,200 and, and 800 square-foot homes, they're unfortunately a thing of the past here in Radnor. And these owners should be allowed to make their properties more inhabitable and more family-friendly, so we can have children that live on the street and that is their only house that they grow up on Garrett Avenue. Now, I've heard a bunch of things about affordable housing. We need affordable housing in, in Radnor. I'm going to say that I agree, but that's not up to this board, it's not up to activist residents. That's up to the county, the state, and the, and the feds. And to the people that are complaining about affordable housing, these are the people that don't live in the overlay. And I've said to them, "Sell your house for 30 cents on the dollar if you want to make a house affordable on Garrett Hill." And they won't do that, but they will restrict 19 houses on Garrett Avenue. To me, that is unfair. One more thing. 19 houses, that is the textbook case of what spot zoning is. Now regarding the, the restaurants, Garrett Hill can handle it. We have not had Angie, as far as I'm concerned, and Superintendent Flanagan, have you had one phone call about rowdy behavior, unruly behavior, litter, since there have been outdoor dining for the past approximately year and a half? That's to you, Superintendent. It's just a yes or no question.
Not, not to my knowledge, without doing a research, a search of an address.
Now, the businesses in Garrett Hill, they need to stay competitive. They need to stay competitive with Wayne, Lower Marion, King
Not to my knowledge, without doing a research, a search of an address.
Great. Now, the businesses in Garrett Hill, they need to stay competitive. They need to stay competitive with Wayne, Lower Marion, King of Prussia, Berwyn, all over. DoorDash. Garrett Hill, if we lose Flips, or we lose the Yale House, it will be a ghost town. We already lost Garrett Hill Pizza, and that is nowhere, it's nowhere getting near where it's going to be something else anytime soon. When we talk about parking, would, would there be an increase in parking? I can speak to it from what I know. Angie would have the, the better numbers, and Kevin can vet them. But it's a neighborhood establishment. They're neighborhood establishments. People walk, people take Uber. You park at Garrett Hill Auto. You can park at the Corporate Center. We don't tow in Garrett Hill. They may tow in Wayne if you park in the liquor store. We don't tow in Garrett Hill. We don't put tickets on meters, because we don't have any in Garrett Hill. That's what's great about Garrett Hill, and that's why some of these businesses need to survive, and they need that shot in the arm. I want to say just a word about Angie Mitchell. Angie has been just, she's the, the perfect case of what you want for a business owner. She cares about the community. It's not lip service. She cares. She employs our, our residents. She helps out with block parties. She's there for the community when someone, you know, the Garrett Hill, the golf tournament that we have in Garrett Hill, that's where they rally around. So if we lose somebody to COVID, or someone has a fire, that's, that's a central point where everybody meets. And these businesses need to stay afloat for our residents. I stated before, Garrett Hill has already lost Garrett Hill Pizza. We are at a crucial point. And let's look at it. This overlay, it didn't work. I hear, "Oh, well, people worked a long time on something." That's not a legitimate reason to keep something going. I've worked a long time on things. But we've tried this, and it's failed. It's failed. Now, it pains me to say that there are just, certain residents that are just out of touch with what residents want. Now, I've gone door-to-door. Sue Manth is here. He's gone door-to-door. Do the residents want it? Yes, they do. The residents that live in the restricted overlay have signed petitions. And the people that live close to where the outdoor dining have signed petitions. I am happy to circulate this around. Sue Manth has brought this up. There's one set of residents who, when we were looking to put a comfort station at Emmentonel Park, said that Gatorade and potato chips were outdoor dining. There are people that are just out of touch. And they don't speak on behalf of the residents. There are people here tonight that are energized, but there are also people here tonight that have kids. It's open house, it's school, there's soccer practice, there's swim practice, there's volleyball, baseball, baseball practice, and they cannot be here tonight. But they have all spoken months ago when they signed these petitions. And they talked to me. That's pretty much what I have, but I'll just, I just want to end with this. I've given you the reasons, and I think my reasons are valid, and I will let the, the residents speak. Not only have I given you the reasons, but one more thing before I finish. Jake, did I talk to these people? Yes. This has been in my newsletter for two and a half years. This has been on my Facebook page at nauseam. I had a town hall here, I've, where people could call in, and they said, "Oh, well, people don't have," and it's just stall tactic after stall tactic. Well, some people don't have the internet. Okay, then they can call in. It's just, I've done everything. I've walked around with the Barkers. Lisa was there. I've talked to them. But there has never, ever been an exchange of, "Here's the ordinance, let's try to find a compromise." It's Slim Jims and Gatorade is outdoor dining. There's no conversation. And when there's no conversation, you need to do what's best for these residents. And these residents are the residents that talk to me. They're the ones with kids, and I believe they're the ones that get it. But look, I've given you the reasons. The reality is, it's illegal spot zoning, and it has caused institutional racism that affects property values to my friends and my neighbors. Failure to introduce and pass this ordinance, I believe, will cause just irreparable harm to Garrett Hill, and to the businesses, and to the residents. And if Garrett Hill becomes more of a ghost town, because we lose businesses, businesses don't want to open up there. You know, it would, it would be tragic, absolutely tragic. Not from a tax standpoint, but from the fact that Angie does so much for the community, she employs people in Garrett Hill. I have no more words, other than to say that this is personal, and this needs to get done. Thank you.
So Commissioner Farah, my, my only question or request, is it possible to hold another town hall meeting before the next board meeting? I'd like to be able to see that discussion between the two sides, hear the pros, hear the cons, hear, you know, what the different positions are. I mean, I think, I mean, what you're saying, it makes sense. I think we all want that for our little communities. We want them to thrive and survive.
Jake, if you, if you vote for the introduction, I will do it. Okay? I will do it. I'll probably do it anyway, but if you vote for the introduction, and you're on board that something like this needs to be done, and done in a transparent way. We have people walking around our neighborhood with these cards, right? It says Garrett Hill zoning changes come September 13th. Please attend. Outdoor dining increasing budget. There is no name, there is no professional organization. It's someone putting these cards in these doors. It's a scare tactic. Ironically, it's Roberta Winter, someone who preaches transparency. Won't put her name.
Sean, she's not here, and we don't know that.
That's fine, but she won't put her name.
We shouldn't be using people's, residents' names.
May I just, may I just ask? So to Commissioner Abel's point, and Commissioner Farah, you said it yourself, that you feel this is a compromise, or is this ordinance, so this is not a compromise, so there's no compromising, because, you know, you feel like you had, you tried to bring people together, people didn't want to talk about it, is it, you know, I guess I'm concerned, you know, you are calling out residents, I think that is, you know, that's, that seems a little, you know, and I don't know what's happening. But I feel like, you know, is there opportunity still for compromise?
Okay.
So to Commissioner Abel's point, if you had a meeting, you know, could this still be discussed? I mean, you have to, I understand that emotions are running high, I think, on both sides of the issue, where the people who worked on this, you know, with the idea of maintaining and protecting the many residential neighborhoods that make the township such a unique community, there are people who feel there are things within that overlay that make and help keep Garrett Hill unique. I don't think anyone intended it to be some of the things that you've described it as, you know. So I, I just wonder if there is opportunity for compromise, because as I said, things do change. You know, this overlay was put in place, I think, in 2013. You know, things do change, things evolve. So that's good, but communities have to have those conversations. And it sounds like this ordinance was written and conceived. I know you had some framework. I know you talked with some residents around the framework of it.
No, I talked to all the residents.
So I'm just.
Sure, let me, let me answer that. Okay. When this process started, you were either the president or the vice president. And you said, "Look, go talk to these people." I did. You said, "Go make it transparent." I did. It's in my newsletter, right? You said, "Go have a town hall." I did. "Go have a walk with the Barkers." I did. "Let's invite Tom Lowry." I did. Okay? And then there was a town hall a while ago. This has been as transparent as it has been. Period. People have had two years, two years to make recommendations. They have not. Instead, they filibustered and tried to drag this thing out. Now, you're saying is there compromise? In that two years, I was saying, "This is what we need to do." Two simple things. Outdoor dining, increase the height. That's it. And there was no compromise. The compromise is Slim Jims and Gatorade is outdoor dining. That's the compromise. When you talk to these residents, that is what they say. Any food outside is outdoor dining in Garrett Hill. Yep, well, yeah, it was said at Brenrose, at Brenrose meetings.
I don't think.
It was said, it was said when we did the walkabout at Emmentonel with the former manager on where we were going to put the comfort station. They were complaining that even selling Slim Jims and Gatorade was considered outdoor dining, and where were you going to put the trash cans? And people were going to come from far around to buy a hot dog at the Emmentonel Snack Shack. Yes, I remember it clear as day.
Commissioner Farah, I think it's more productive if, let's just have this conversation with the commissioners.
Sure, sure. That's fine. But to answer your question, Jake, I have discussed this at nauseam. My cellphone is available to everybody. People could call me. No one has, no one cares.
Well, I'll, I'll give you this promise. I will vote for introduction tonight, in the hopes that there will be a town hall meeting.
I will, I will get a town hall meeting. Let's do it.
It does not guarantee that I will vote for final passage.
Fair enough.
But I do, but I do want to hear from both sides of the neighbors.
Okay, fair enough. Fair enough. That's, that's reasonable. That's, that's all I can ask for.
So I, you know, I continue to be concerned about the parking and the parking capacity when it comes to the outdoor dining. And again, I am, you know, I'm a fan of outdoor dining. You know, I'm, I'm concerned about that. I wonder if there's a way to be able to better assess, you know, whether or not this is going to cause an issue. And I hear what you're saying about people are allowed to park in the Corporate Center, people are allowed, is there a way for us to secure some sort of agreement that that is allowed to happen, so that people know they can park there? Is there, you know, are those things that we could put in place prior to approving this, just so we know we're not bringing people somewhere where there, there's nowhere to park, or, and, you know, I know that, you know.
I can address that.
People will Uber, or people will walk, and I understand that. And Garrett Hill is such a walkable neighborhood, and that's one of the things that makes it so special. So, but I just, you know, if, if you want it to be even more than what it is, then you'd want to bring people from other areas, correct?
And let me address that. So I feel that I have addressed parking. As of now, with, people don't use the upstairs, the, the parking is fine. I think the, the fact that Garrett, that Flippin' Bally's has outdoor tables, it really hasn't changed the parking dynamic since things have opened up. Now they're slowing down, but parking has not been an issue. I don't think parking has been an issue for, for Flippin' Bally's for years. Now, I had the opportunity to talk to not Steve Bages, his son, recently, and I thanked him. I said, "You know, we don't tow in Garrett Hill. Thanks for letting us use the thing." And he smiled. "You're using your parking lot." And he smiled. So they have a good relationship. They don't trash the parking lot. I mean, could that change? Sure. Angie could sell, the Corporate Center could sell. But as of now, as I said, we don't tow in Garrett Hill. We don't have meters. Everybody is respectful with the parking. And by not, and by, and it's been addressed, whether or not you, if you're looking for a reason not to support this, you can talk about parking all day long.
I'm not looking for a reason not to support it. I'm looking for, so, you know, if we put something in place, it's, it's in place for no matter who owns the building, no matter who is the restaurateur, no matter who is the Corporate Center owner. You know, we need to, you know, if you put something in place, part of our problem, I think, sometimes is, we put things in place in the moment, and we don't think about it in the long term. We're facing that right now with this, right? We put something in place in the moment, and we didn't think about it maybe long term, and how it would impact people in a long-term way. So I'm just asking that we consider what the long-term ramifications might be, because things may change. I know that we have a, you know, I mean, I've lived in Radnor most of my life. I think that building has been like three different restaurants.
Sure.
Since I've lived here, so.
Sure, but, but I've been, we're not in the moment, Lisa. I've been discussing this for two years. This is not, this is not an afterthought. This is something that I've spoken to the solicitor with.
I'm not suggesting it's an afterthought.
I've spoken with our codes with, I've spoken with Angie and the business owners with. So it's not an in-the-moment. This has been going on for years. Per your request, your initial request, which was, "Talk to the Barkers, talk to Tom Lowry, do a walkabout, be transparent." I did everything that you want.
Do you want me to have a good meeting?
It may not have been a good meeting, but, it may not have been a good meeting, but it is transparent. So if you're saying that I didn't talk to the, the neighbors, I did. And I, I've gone door-to-door. We have petitions. It's pretty cut and dry. I just think people are just finding reasons not, you know, once again, it's, you know, if, if it was anybody else, if it was Wayne, I think it'd be fine, but I just feel like it's Garrett Hill. It's getting the shaft here. So, again, it's, it is a little bit personal with me. I don't want to see the business district die, and I want to see people that have been wronged with spot zoning be righted. Period. That's what I have. We can go around in circles. I'm comfortable with what I've stated.
I'm asking if there are any additional commissioner comments? Is there any staff comment? Hold up. So I know you know, because you've been here more than once, I am just going to remind everyone. Everybody gets five minutes to say whatever they need to say. I'll give you a one-minute warning when we get to four minutes, and then I will cut you off, because we're getting a little bit late.
With your permission, I'd like to read for the board and the public a letter from Rick Barker. He is a new grandpa, and is helping to take care of his daughter and the grandbaby, so he could not be here tonight.
If it's your time, you can read baseball scores. It's up to you.
So this is Rick saying this. "My name is Rick Barker, and I'm not opposed to outdoor dining in any way. I don't believe anyone is opposed to alfresco dining per se. What I am in favor of is good zoning. I served as the chair of the Garrett Hill Steering Committee while the Garrett Hill Master Plan and the Garrett Hill Zoning District were created. So I lived and breathed Radnor and Garrett Hill from 2007 to 2009. I'll cut right to the chase. We need your help now in Garrett Hill. The township is poised to enact some deeply flawed amendments," is his opinion, "with regard to its outdoor dining ordinance. I don't believe adequate consideration has been given to the long-term consequences as redevelopment takes place. I don't think property owners are truly aware and informed of the impact of such drastically reduced setbacks, i.e. 1/10th and 1/2 of the current outdoor dining ordinance setbacks. Garrett Hill is unique in that it is the only place in Radnor Township where the residential neighborhood and the commercial business districts are interwoven. Great consideration and great caution need to be taken with zoning to ensure against detrimental repercussions, as well as to embody and exemplify basic fairness. These amendments would strip those affected businesses and surrounding residents alike of the same protections afforded to all other residents in the township. The planner we used, Marion and Jim, advised the Steering Committee and the community during the process that limited outdoor dining should be achieved by zoning waiver or through conditional use application to the VOC. Unfortunately, I don't think this far more sensible approach is likely politically at this juncture. We're faced with," I'm going to cut it a little bit, "the 100 and 500-foot setbacks are eliminated. The replacement 50-foot setback is not actually a 50-foot setback, because it's measured from the building instead of the property line. It's as if the unencumbered peaceful enjoyment of one's yard is not a consideration. The setback should be measured from the property line, not the dwelling, as with the existing outdoor dining ordinance. The setback should include all categories of residential zoning, not just single-family detached, of which there's only one in proximity. All residential zoning categories are included in the existing outdoor dining ordinance. Without specifying the setbacks for the actual dwelling types that exist in Garrett Hill, the protective setback would then become zero. What will be the magnitude of the diminished real estate values on those adjacent and surrounding property?" What will be the magnitude of the diminished real estate values on those adjacent and surrounding property owners without the protections of setbacks afforded to all others living in the township? The protections afforded to all other township residents should be preserved for Garrett Hillians. It seems the COVID related concessions for outdoor dining should be extended. Bottom line, if diminished setbacks are to be used to facilitate outdoor dining, I don't believe that carefully constructed setback language in the existing outdoor dining ordinance should be abandoned. It is clearly defined. It eliminates ambiguity and will not create nonconformities as properties are redeveloped. It accommodates the inevitable condition of unimproved lots and recognize the homeowner's right to a setback.
One minute.
For any part of their property. Please ensure that all outdoor seating should be permitted using the existing township parking standards for restaurants. One space per three seats plus one space per two employees at the shift of greatest employment. No one, neither Commissioner Farkey nor the owners of Flippin' Bailey's has advocated for an increase in seating without the, can't even say the word, increase in parking. While waiving the parking standard is appropriate for Wayne with its considerable supply of municipal parking, it is not feasible for Garrett Hill with its chronic undersupply of available parking, which has plagued the Garrett Hill Business District and neighborhoods for decades. This has further exacerbated that the outdoor seating will occupy existing parking spaces and as such will further diminish the parking supply. And thank you. And by the way, no, we don't have parking meters. But we have parking permits, which is two hours. And I'm a little tired of paying $20 parking tickets when somebody comes to my house and stays more than two hours. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sumit Joseph. I live in 117 Garrett Avenue. I'm in the overlay district. And Commissioner Abel, like you asked a question, you want to hear our view. Back in 2010, the business owners, even Angie, didn't even know that her property was being rezoned. Had no idea. I didn't until I had someone actually tell me, hey, they're doing this to your property. And who is it? It's the Garrett Hill Coalition. They were elected, I guess, by the township or appointed by the township. It wasn't an election. And then the people on it, Sean is right. He was the first commissioner who actually supported us. Before John Fisher actually threatened me and said, hey, I wouldn't, I wouldn't challenge this if I were you. I heard, I heard you didn't get proper zoning permits for your stuff. And I said, actually, John, I did. And then after that, it was Phil R. And then, you know, obviously he's in jail for being a pedophile. But, and then now it's still, nothing's changed. These people, they're kind of like disguising what's really happening. They're like going with these little terms. If you actually look at our 19 homes, they took 19 homes in the middle of Garrett Avenue and just said, we're going to change. They took, we were C1 commercial. My property definitely was worth more as C1. And then they said, let's make up our own zoning code, first time in U.S. history. And but, and the weird thing is they didn't do it to any of their own properties. And if you ask who is Rick Barker? I don't know. To me, he's a nobody in terms of this law. Because I looked up and he actually lied to the Delaware County and said he's a property owner in Garrett Hill. He actually doesn't own his property. It's Vicki Law.
Point of order, point of order. I don't, I don't think we need to be maligning other residents right now.
It's to show that, oh, sorry.
Mr. Sumit, can you, we want to hear what you have to say, but could you just stick to without maligning anyone else in the community, please?
Tell Commissioner Abel and the rest of the commissioners that you want to reassess your property.
Yeah.
That would be a good point.
So in terms of value of my property, I went to go get my, we went up for reassessment. My taxes doubled this year, exactly double. But the weird thing is my property is worth less than my neighbors on either side of us. I, I don't know why, they keep, I don't know how it says this is to preserve Garrett Hill when you took 19 homes in the middle of Garrett Avenue. And it doesn't make sense. And on top of that, 19 homes, we're all different racial demographic. And if you just look at it, the township appointed a group of all white people who don't live in the overlay and decided to, and decided to spot zone 19 homes. That is unfair. And then on top of that, I've been bullied for like 12 years. They've had, I've had false police reports. I've had anonymous letters from them. I had a Delaware County sheriff go through my property and go through my cars to find stuff on me. And they're all part of the Garrett Hill Coalition. And to me, just because I was, I was challenging the zoning, it's, the zoning is wrong. But at least Sean was the only one who said, okay, let's make it a little bit right. And in terms of height, the majority of our homes in that 19 homes, we're actually above 30 feet. I'm 35 feet. And if you actually drive by and look at those 19 homes, we were actually conforming in the previous zoning. And now we're nonconforming. So if they're saying, oh, we're making it more conforming, it's not true. Nothing, it just feels like, I don't know the real intention of why they did this. They're not saying it. But it doesn't make sense when you spot zone 19 homes and you're like, well, we're kind of, and then they gave the other half of our street who were C1, they gave them mixed use. That doesn't make sense if they said they want to preserve Garrett Hill. How did you give half of them mixed use and the other half Garrett Hill neighborhood? We're not, we went from C1 to below our 5321 and we're Garrett Hill neighborhood. We are that restricted. And they're like, well, we gave them this, we gave them, we never had any chance to even negotiate. They just made us come to the meetings and say, sorry, they just made us come to the meetings and say, you can listen, but you're not going to have any say in anything. And that's what happened.
Sumit, how many people of the Garrett, that were on the Garrett Hill Coalition, how many of them lived in the restrictive part of the overlay when they made that restrictive part of the ordinance? How many?
Not one then and not one now.
Okay. And then one more thing, they wouldn't do this to any other street, but they did it to a highly racially mixed street.
Because they know if they did it to their own street and their own neighbors, their neighbors would have a problem with this.
Sean, can we not make that accusation? I mean, that's, no one's here to defend that and that's a hard thing to say, tell somebody.
No. I'll let, I'll let him speak to that.
This is public comment as well.
I just feel like, at least look at it from, I really encourage you to talk to the neighbors. I was the only, they didn't even go to any of the neighbors and say, how do you feel about your property being changed? Not then, not now. I did. I said, you know what? Let's actually be fair and go about this. I got signatures from everybody and they said, I didn't even know this was happening. I didn't know we rezoned this when I bought my house.
Give you the gong now. I apologize. We're in five minutes. Thank you very much.
I appreciate you guys listening.
Is there any additional public comment?
Okay, well, since Roberta couldn't be here in person, she's here in spirit because I'm going to read a letter for her. My name is Kim Cruz and I'm at 70 Garrett Avenue. So this is from Roberta Winters and she's in Williams Road. So, dear commissioners, I appreciate the time you and the staff have spent reviewing the proposed changes in the Garrett Hill overlay district. The comments and suggestions provided both residents and the Delaware County Planning Board should be incorporated into any of the proposed changes to the property, to protect our community. The establishment of necessary separation, 100 to 500 foot setbacks between outdoor dining and any and all residential properties or undeveloped lots, be they single family houses, twins, duplexes, multifamily townhouses, et cetera. The setting of measurements in a clear, unambiguous way for sidewalk space and for setbacks between outdoor dining and restaurant lots to be property lines and not to the actual residents. The examination of parking relative to impacts of building height and potentially greater commercial use of properties along Garrett Avenue and expanded outdoor dining that provides more seats with less required dedicated parking. The needed documentation for pen for compliance with right of ways along Conestoga Road, a state highway. The need to increase staff over the foreseeable future to provide for code compliance and ordinance enforcements in the Garrett Hill community, counting seats, measuring distances, monitoring noise, assessing health regulations, overseeing alcohol use, protecting permit parking, et cetera. Outdoor dining was instituted on a short term basis to promote business during COVID. Few question this need. However, extensions to existing ordinances can continue to be instituted on an as need basis or adopted via conditional use. Such use would benefit the property owner and potentially change the neighborhood in a more limited way. We believe that the presently proposed modifications, while saving advocates out of pocket costs for conditional use and/or variances, may ultimately cost residents through long term consequences. All wards in Radnor Township are fortunate to have special communities that you as commissioners provide oversight. Garrett Hill is one that is in particularly in need of your ongoing attention because of its unique history, diversity, density, accessibility to public transportation and affordable housing. A comprehensive, long range planning of the drawing board is in the near future, would be most useful in such decision making. Further, other options such as conditional uses and variances would provide fees to the township and the relief requested by advocates without the threat of unknown impacts to the greater community. Thank you for your ongoing consideration for the welfare of all. Roberta Winters. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Andrew Tillman, 854 Conestoga Road, or 858, because I could be two properties, as they say. I'm one property. I'm up here, first when we were talking about creating the overlay district way back. They said, you know, things can be changed. This is, this is fluid. We'd be able to make changes here. And here we're trying to make a simple change for outdoor dining and it's so complex, you would have thought we were building a town. You know, when it goes to, when it goes to the height, we go to the height, you didn't even talk about, you didn't even talk about Conestoga Road. If you're raising their height, you raise my height. Why is my height not 42 feet? Is that going to be a problem? We're talking about raising, we raised, we had to raise it 35 feet because we made a mistake because there's so many laws in four different sections of Garrett Hill. Nobody knows the zoning. You have to go, where do you live? What's your address? Are you neighborhood? Are you, are you, oh, you're Conestoga Road Business District. There's so many different laws in our three, two block town that it's ridiculous. It's really ridiculous. And for this to go through, not to have outdoor dining. And I'll go back and I'll say it again because I remember what you said. And the Radnor Township, their master plan of Radnor Township, it states right there to preserve and protect the business districts of the township. And that is not what you're doing with our businesses and our community. And I see real estate down the street go up. Our property values have not gone up. And we have restrictions for people that want to come in and maybe purchase our properties. I don't think one property on Conestoga Road District has sold, other than maybe the locksmith building. That was the only property that has been sold in 10 years or more. But yet down the street, the people that were up here complaining about all the things that were going to be, everybody thought Walmart was coming to Garrett Hill. And if we don't scare the residents into, you know, restricting the business district, then we are going to, they're going to be parking in your driveway and they're going to be robbing your houses and there's going to be drug dealers everywhere. And this has not happened. We are still plowing along. We still get up every day and pay our tax bill and pay our mortgages. But yet here we are, we're asking for a little and we're getting put down again. It hasn't stopped. We are still the same business owners. We still have to pay our taxes. We still have to feed our family. But I don't have to get in anybody else's face and say, hey, look, I don't like the color of your shutters. You should paint them, you know? Or your shrubs give me allergies. You should cut them down. This is, this is what, this is what this whole overlay has done. And it should just be put in the trash. And you know, you got to remember, we're the only properties, I think, in the United States that have minimum lot width. Or maximum lot width. Was it maximum lot width? Sumit? Maximum lot width. That means I can't buy my neighbor and expand my building or expand my property. That, that's, you know, that's, I just, I'm up here to say, you know, some of these things need to be looked at more than this just little ordinance for the height. You know, we had to raise the height because nobody knew the building was 35 feet until it was built. I almost think that's amusing. And all the commissioners up here are all new. There's a whole new group here. So, I mean, okay, but you know what? It just, it needs to be changed. And I really think, I really think it should be really looked at. Is it, Jack, is my time up, you said?
You have one minute.
Okay. Well, I know, you know, in the same respect, it's, it's just not fair that we're trying to get a little something going. Here's a, here's a simple little things that got to get changed. And there could be, there's 100 things that need changed. You know, as far as all the setbacks and all this construction and they, they, they made this, they made this master plan of Garrett Hill like it was, like we were Wayne, like we had 10 foot sidewalks. We can't do brick and herringbone and a four foot, we don't have, we're lucky we had, we don't even have sidewalks on some properties. You know? And for the residents, and to go from C, I was C3 zoning. Don't talk about getting railroaded. I went from C3 down to mixed use.
That's fine.
I just, think about it.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? Going once. Come on up.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me? Thank you all again. This, my name is Angie Mitchell. My husband Gene is with me tonight. We are the owners of Flip and Bailey's and the Garrett Hill Ale House, both in the district we're talking about. I know I've met with you both, with a lot of you on Zoom and this first time in person. So I appreciate you letting me talk. I'll be quick because you've heard about everything I've had to say before. There've been a lot of questions and a lot of really important things, I think, that need to be understood. It is necessary. Outside dining, Commissioner Booker, like you said, it's here, it's going to stay. When we purchased the property, it was not allowed. We were not made aware of it. We learned about it after the fact. But we came 10 years ago to the township to try to find out what could be done. And it was because summers are slow for us. Business is tough in the summer. People will go to the walking district of Wayne. They will go to the shore. They'll go to somewhere where they can eat outside. So we started this process 10 years ago, knowing this was an uphill battle. This isn't something that came up during the pandemic, but now that it's here, it's changed everybody's lives. We have to change. We have to adapt. We have to be competitive or we will not survive. With, with your question about the parking, I have never once asked for additional occupancy. I will adjust our occupancy accordingly and replace seats outside, take them from inside, put them outside. I'm not asking for added occupancy. I've never asked for that. I don't think that's really reasonable. So I think that's a fair question and I think it's something that I'm completely fine with if that's allowed. For anybody who knows us, I know, I know Sean, you said, you know, we do a lot for the community. We care a lot. That's what a community does. Why do we buy right next to each other? We own Flippin' Bailey's. We own Garrett Hill Ale House. They're directly across from each other because we care about the community. We want to offer different items in the community because we care about it. We're very involved. Anybody can ask. If anybody needs anything, we're there. Flanagan K9 unit, you're like, what can we do? Let's help, let's bring this to the township. You know, for Garrett Hill, you want to support, you want to bring money into the community? What can we do? The Garrett Hill Parade, what can we do? That's what we do as a community. But what we don't do is what they're doing, is try to prevent change from allowing a business to succeed. It's absolutely necessary and what they're doing is, it's disruptive and it's disheartening because I would never do that to my neighbor. And that's what I am. And I can guarantee you, I don't think I've ever seen any of, any of them in my restaurant in at least the last four years. So I'm just asking, you guys have the ability to make this change. It's not unreasonable. I just would like some seats. I'd like to be able to be competitive. And I think it's time for change. It's time that you consider this. And I do have to say, I mean, I know Commissioner Abel, you had said it would be great to have a town hall meeting, but I think that's what this is. You know, it's not, we have a lot of different things we're talking about, but you've heard their side. You've heard business, you've heard businesses side. We do pay attention. Like Andy, he's our mechanic, you know, our, one of our closest friends, our locksmith. He lives right down the street. We get along and we treat each other like family, but a town hall listens to both sides and they won't listen to another side. They developed this commission and this, this group without even consulting existing business owners. Actually, for your reference, you know, I know you mentioned the overlay. I, I'm, actually, for your reference, you know, I know you mentioned the, the overlay district that's being proposed in another township. You know, I, I do just say, when you consider that, ask that commission that's been developed if they consulted with the businesses. Because if you're talking with residents and businesses, they're always going to have different points. But I would hate it if I saw it in another township, a business getting affected by a decision that a residence didn't consult them on. Just, if you've ever been, if you ever come over to Garrett Hill in the neighborhood, I will have to say, we do have about 50 spots, and I would say in the last two years, if 20 of those spots are filled, that's a good day. We just, business is, is tough, and we don't have a parking situation as of now. I think that's it. And I don't have any box scores, but I am a St. Louis Cardinals fan, and it's the top of the fourth, 2-0, Cardinals over the Mets.
Any additional public comment?
Mr. President, I'm a diehard Cubs fan, and that just may have lost my vote.
Okay, I'm going to call the vote. We've been here for a while, all in favor of the introduction only. This is, guys, not creating an ordinance. It just enables us to have another conversation another time. So, those of you who are for it can come back and pitch. Those of you who are against it can come back and pitch, or not if it doesn't pass. All in favor of the introduction say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. Let me poll the audience because it's getting a little bit late.
On that point, Commissioner Abel, I mean Commissioner Larkin, could we have these, whatever item the kids here are here to talk about, could we have, could we do that one if it's not next?
Is that the Conestoga Road?
Yes.
That's where we're going next, assuming you've got someone in the audience. Let's go there. So, I will move for... Is that aye? Yes, thank you. I will move for Resolution 2021-102, authorizing award of the contract for permitting, design, bidding documents, and construction services for crosswalk improvements to the intersection of South Devon Avenue and Conestoga Road to Gilmore and Associates Incorporated in the amount of $17,000. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any Commissioner comment?
Well, is, is, Bill, is Steve around?
Yes.
Well, and I'll just, I'll just kick this off. You know, we just listened to a lengthy discussion talking about, you know, a two-year process. For me, this is a four-year process. If anyone knows this area, we're talking about the intersection of Conestoga Road and South Devon Road. Currently, there is a crosswalk there. It's not ADA compliant, nor is it safe. So, you know, it's, it's been a long haul trying to get PennDOT on board to, to allow us to move this forward. We have traction and, and we have engaged neighbors who are here to, to speak. This, this is, and Commissioner Larkin, this is no different than we talked about the Lenora Crossing, where it wasn't a good spot to cross. We wanted to bring people down to West Wayne because we have the access to the trail at the Friends of Radnor Trail. We have an access point to the, to the Radnor Trail at Gallagher Road. The easiest way to access Gallagher Road is crossing Conestoga down South Devon and making a right on Gallagher. In addition, we've got a number of, of young families that have moved on to Conestoga Road, South Devon Road. We don't see, we don't see the volume we should at that crosswalk because parents know it's not safe. They're not letting their kids go out and cross Conestoga to get to their friend's house or from the other side of Conestoga to come to the parks or walk to school. So, we're, we're long past due on this. I, I do credit Steve for continuing to be persistent with PennDOT. I, I give all the credit to the neighbors for remaining engaged. You know, if the kids need a, a, a letter tomorrow to their, to their teachers, I, I will be happy to write that. I think they deserve an A in civics or some sort of merit badge.
Can we write letters to schools? Do we have that power?
I, I, you can write a letter to anyone.
Oh, this is going to be great. Good to know. Okay, go on.
But, but, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we're trying to build neighborhoods that, connectivity within neighborhoods. And the way to do that is to make safe crosswalks, and, and this is probably the most dangerous in, in my ward and the one that needs to be done the quickest. So, again, thanks everyone for sticking around, and I'll let my, my colleagues talk, and then you'll have an opportunity to speak.
So, to me, it's a no-brainer if it's a safety of the community. So, I want to thank everyone who's come out to speak this eve, this evening, especially our, our youngest residents. I think that's amazing. But, yeah, it's, to me, that's a no-brainer. Anything that has to do with safety for our community, you don't need to ask me twice.
If I can just comment, I wholly agree with what Commissioner Abel said and Commissioner Borowski. It's very close to my ward to cross from one over to the other. It is an extremely dangerous crosswalk. Something has to be done, and, and really, whatever it has to be done to make it, make it safer is all for the better. Cars come around Conestoga Road at that point at a, a dangerous speed for anybody who's trying to cross. So, thank you for bringing this up, bringing this to our attention, and can't wait to hear from you.
Steve, in, in 50 words or less, can you just give a real high-level description of what is on the table tonight?
And also explain what's the dangerous? Why, why do, why do we say this is dangerous?
Commissioner, in the legislative memo, I, I did insert a picture of, of the crosswalk.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking at it right now.
Right. So, there's just two single white lines that cross the street. We call this an undocumented crosswalk. I don't know who put it in. It doesn't conform to today's standards. So, the idea would be to install ADA curb cuts on both sides of the street to make it, number one, we're required to do so, but that makes it a lot easier for folks that are, have physical disabilities or just mom and dad with a stroller, right? And what's in here would be, instead of the two white lines, would be what we call continental crosswalk, the big piano keys that go across the street that are much more visible along with signage. The one thing, and I, I should bring this up, we did not go, I'm at 73 words, sir, I'm sorry. The one thing we did not look at or did not include in this proposal was the rapid flashing beacon. I think, and Commissioner, we talked about that. That's something we have down in Villanova at the crosswalk there. We could amend the proposal to include that, but the concern was that it's, it's onerous for the folks that live right there when this thing's flashing all the time. So, the, the general thought for this would be ADA required, curb cuts, continental crosswalk, and enhanced signage for that.
Steve, sorry, may I ask, are you talking about the flashing, the flashing lights that would be in the street, sort of, you know, like in front of, um?
No, so, a rectangular rapid flashing beacon is seven feet high, maybe about yay wide, and they can be activated by a button or they can be activated by motion. The, the best example I can tell you of one is on South Eithan Avenue at the South Dorms, where the kids cross. We put one in there that is activated by a button. On most of my trips, the kids don't activate it, so you, you don't, you know, you don't really see it, but that's what that is. It's a very, it's not the type that goes in the street. There's a lot of issues with those types of lights as far as maintenance and reliability, the ones you mentioned, Commissioner.
And Steve, with the signage, would we have the sign back in the middle of the street?
I think that's something we, you know, I would talk to the chief. I think that's something we could do now, Commissioner. It used to be there, and it only got removed during the winter for plowing purposes, but I, I don't see why that couldn't go back now and couldn't be there when we're done this project.
So, so we may see it tomorrow?
I'll do my best, sir.
Thank you.
Any additional Commissioner comment? Any last staff comment? Public comment?
So, my name is Patricia Denham. We moved into 121 Conestoga Road, which is the, the last house on the right as you approach the farmer's market about two years ago. My children try to ride their bikes to school, and this, the crosswalk that they have to go across to get to school is wildly unsafe. There's a curve in the road there that you can't see the crosswalk as you approach it, and people routinely come down this road at 10 over the speed limit, which would be 45 miles an hour. There is no way for the children to be seen as you come around that corner, especially because there is a light post there. And that sign that was in the middle of the road was consistently run over by cars where my children walk. As you make the turn, people were hitting it. People were swerving and hitting it because they didn't realize there was something in the road. And it was actually my daughter that said, hey, I can't get back from school because there's nobody on the other side to walk me across, and I don't want to get hit by a car. So, they get stuck on the other side of the road trying to get back. That's the side of the road that has their school, that has their park, that has the access to the Radnor Trail. And when we went and we brought it up and said, hey, can we do something better about enforcing this crosswalk, is when we found out that it's not a legitimate crosswalk. So, we are here to do everything we can to make it legitimate, to control traffic at that site, and to make sure we don't get hit by cars. My daughter has a lot to say on it, so I'm going to defer to her.
Hi, my name is Amara. I live on Conestoga Road, and I go to Wayne Elementary School. I have to cross Conestoga Road to get to school. It is very hard because I have to cross Conestoga, and cars go zooming past, and I can't cross till someone stops. But, but in, but I really want the cars to go slower. It is really important that I, I don't get hit by a car.
So, I have a question, and, well, Superintendent Flanagan's not here. That was really, my question is, because I'm aware of the crosswalk, that maybe it's not the best place for a crosswalk. That is my concern, that people do come around so fast that, you know, and most people do get, unfortunately, so I've read, most people do get hit in crosswalks. So, that if it's not a safe place for a crosswalk, maybe we have, should have somewhere else.
I think, Commissioner, we, we look at crosswalks to be at intersections, right? Not at what we call a mid-block crosswalk, which would be, say, somewhere between Conestoga and Lancaster, somewhere between South Devon and Lancaster Avenue. And we're going to go through the permitting process with PennDOT because Conestoga's a PennDOT road. So, there'll be, if, if this is approved tonight, so there'll be the final say, but as far as it moving at mid-block, that, that's problematic. I, I honestly don't think PennDOT would approve that if it wasn't at a cross street.
So, is that the only place?
Well, there's, as you proceed east, there's Doyle, there's Lantoga, and eventually West Wayne, which has a traffic signal. But I think years back when I met the Commissioner for the first time, Commissioner Abel, we were, we met with some of the folks that lived there, and that's very much where they'd like to have it.
I understand that's where they like to have it, but is that the safe place for it? That's my question.
I, I'm Alice Meen, and I live on Conestoga Road directly across from South Devon Avenue. My driveway comes right across. And I would like to know, what are you going to do? If the traffic is stopped on Conestoga Road, how do I get out of my driveway? Because it's bad enough now, but at least the traffic stops and I can get out if they're turning down South Devon Avenue. But if there's something that stops the traffic and then when it starts up again, it's going to be impossible to get out of my driveway.
So, we haven't adhered to the rule terribly well, but we don't really do question-and-answer session during public comment. This is the time that the public has to speak to the board, but we can't go back and forth really with you. I'm going to suggest that that's a question that would be excellently directed to our township engineer over there, and I'm very confident that he has an answer for you about that. I'm also going to tell you that we're not competent to answer that question for you.
The crosswalk is on my sidewalk. It's about 10 feet from my driveway.
Understood. That's the guy you want to talk to.
Oh, okay.
And Steve, I'm sorry, I'm just going to keep sending residents over to you. Let me ask you to have a conversation with him after the meeting, though, and he'll tell you how it works.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment?
Hi, sir. My, my wife is Patricia, and that is my daughter, the Girl Scout. Just a couple of things that I, I think that they didn't mention. One, when we came to the other meeting with the police, we were basically told that unless there were flashing beacons, that the police could not actually enforce a crosswalk, even with piano keys. Is that correct, Steve?
That I'm not aware of. So, once, if this goes through the PennDOT process, because like I say, this is a PennDOT road, and we have to follow their rules, that is a sanctioned sidewalk. You know, we would have a, we will have a permit, if you will, to install this crosswalk.
Okay. So, that was, that was one concern. I remember just, just hearing like, oh, we can't actually enforce it. So, if piano keys make it something that the police can actually enforce, that's fantastic. If it does have to be blinking for the police to enforce it, you know, certainly, I think, if you have a, a push button to, to get the blink, that's not going to, you know, there, it's a pretty quiet street at night, even though Conestoga is just a death race during the day. But at night, really, there aren't that many folks that are going to the Radnor Trail. Radnor Trail, you're not supposed to be using it really after dusk anyway. So, the number of people that would actually push that button at night is pretty minimal. In regards to the, the placement of it, certainly, like, it, it really is the only place where there's a sidewalk, and it's not even, there's not even a sidewalk on both sides of South Devon. So, every morning, I go out and help my kids get across, get across Conestoga Road. Every morning, I, I get buzzed by cars, you know, as an adult who has a bicycle that's also pretty large and has lights on it. So, you know, this morning, it, it only took me three minutes, but my kids, it'll take them sometimes 20 minutes just to cross the road. So, you know, that's, that's kind of one of the, one of the things that they didn't mention, like, it'll take them 20 minutes sometimes just to cross that road. So, you know, I think it is a good place for it. I think whatever we need to do so the police can enforce it, you know, and I think having a, a crosswalk that's limited use is not going to really change the traffic flow that much in terms of getting in and out. Certainly, I have to get out of Conestoga Road, you know, I'm at 121. So, I've got to deal with the cars going 40 miles an hour coming off Lancaster and, and kind of navigating that myself. But I, I think if we just had a more appropriate crosswalk in that section, you know, that'd make it a little bit easier for everybody. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a suggestion, so, in speaking to our consultant who's doing the design, so the additional design work for a rapid, rectangular rapid flashing beacon is in the area of $3,000. The construction costs would change from 50 to 80-plus. So, may I ask to amend the resolution to include the ability for Gilmore Associates to design the rapid, rectangular rapid flashing beacon? If we don't do it, we don't get charged for it, but that would give us a chance to discuss maybe if, if that's what the residents want. One caveat, that's based on having pedestals, right? You know, that, that sit on the side of the road. If PennDOT would say, oh, no, we want mast arms and poles, that's a very different ballgame. But if I could ask that we would amend this resolution to include a cost of up to $20,000 as opposed to 17?
I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the amendment? Aye. All opposed? Amendment passes unanimously. Is there any additional public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the vote on the amended motion. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Guys, thank you very much for coming out. Moving on to item 5G, ordinance 2021-11, introduction, approving the first amendment to the land lease agreement between the township of Radnor and Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless. I will so move. Is there a second?
A second. Second.
John or Bob? I saw a hand from Bob.
Yeah, we could, we could probably both just explain. This is an extension- This is an extension of the existing lease agreement for the tower out back on this property. And the current lease expires in October, and Verizon is requesting this further extension. The financial terms are set forth in there. I think Bob or Stevie G has done a financial analysis of what the, of what the revenue is on this. This goes back to 1996, 1997. And they're, they want to extend it another five terms. Five years. And tonight's for introduction.
And if I may, just thanks to Stevie G, we had asked Steve to intervene and help negotiate the terms of the lease. There were several offers from Verizon Wireless that were initially not, not accepted, and Stevie went back, and we ended up with an extension very similar to the first lease. These are a series of four, five-year extensions with a rate increase of 3.5% per year. Over the life of the lease, the township will collect approximately $627,000 in lease revenue from 20, from now until 2041. And it's just, as Mr. Rice mentioned, it's just more equipment at the base of the tower just outside this building, the equipment that supports the antenna operations.
Any commissioner comment?
Could you review the financial terms again?
Yes, Commissioner. The current terms are, or the term of the lease is increased rent at 3.5% per year, each year over the next 20 years. Currently, the township's collecting $21,420 a year, and over the next 20 years, that will increase, and by 2041, it'll be $42,620 per year. For total, total annual, for total lease value over the 20-year term, $626,934.
Is there any upfront payment?
No, sir.
I recall Bob was talking about this lease and was, was talking seven figures at Did something change, or was there, was that not feasible, or, or is there, has the market changed since a year or two or three ago?
Commissioner, I think those discussions were relating to the installation of multiple other new cell towers. This one is only relating to the existing one next to this building.
So do we have any comps or anything? So 3.5%, I guess, sounds fine, but I, I don't know. It could be, could be high or it could be way low. What, what, what do we have? Do you have any comps? There's anything for me to be able to tell what, whether that's a good deal or not? Why do you think that's a good deal?
I don't really know. I think it's a fair deal. The, there was a similar type agreement back in 2014 with an upfront payment, and, but that was for the lease of the entire tower. This is just simply ground equipment. It's a very simple lease. It's for a very small amount of space at the base of the tower.
So this, the tower's not, tower's not included in this lease amendment?
This is just for the equipment at the base of the tower. There's separate agreements that govern the antenna on the tower.
And why do they need this extra space for the equipment? If it's, if it is extra?
I think it's the same space, more or less.
For the antenna to operate, there's equipment required to be on the ground.
And they have the equipment there now?
Correct. It's been there since 1997.
So there's no new space? It's just the same, it's the equipment?
Correct.
And that's separate from the tower lease?
Correct.
The tower's not over top of the equipment?
The tower is on top of the equipment. Yes.
So what is in the ground, so there's a, there's a?
This is a, this is a land lease agreement. There's a separate tower agreement.
And that's, I, I guess that's excluded from the land? That's a, like, is that air rights or something? That doesn't matter.
And, and just to answer your, Stevie, I asked Stevie G the question about comps and standard, and I, I just know from other municipalities, the 3.5% is, is pretty standard. It's not low, it's not high. It's what, it pretty much is most municipalities are getting for their land lease.
It was, 3.5% was pretty, was fine, you know, for the last 20 years or so, but inflation is way above that now. And also, I have, I don't know why we'd do 20-year commitment on that. I mean, so I know it's five-year terms. What are the terms to, is it, it's automatically, who, what, what are the cancellation terms?
Through the six months. I'm sorry. The lessee can terminate the agreement by giving lessor six months' notice.
Well, we get, we, we give them, we could terminate on six months. What about at, at each five-year turn?
No, 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 no. The let, the, let me go back. Lessee is Verizon. Lessee, Verizon can terminate this lease in six months' notice.
Oh, okay. They could terminate.
The township doesn't have a right to terminate this once it's signed, unless there's some kind of a breach. And there hasn't been a breach since 1997, so.
Well, I, I would suggest, in light of the inflation rate where it is, and in light of the length of this lease, that we not go this long and maybe have a right, we do five years and then have a chance to look at it every, every five years. So that would be my recommendation. I don't, I don't like 20 years. I don't like 3.5% in light of the inflation rate. So you can, you can, you can disagree with me, but that's how I feel. Thanks, thanks, Bob.
Any additional commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Any public comment? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes with one opposed. Moving on to item 5H, Resolution 2021-101, Authorizing the Payment of a Change Order for the Consulting Design and Construction Services for the Valley Creek Stream Bank Stabilization at Robin Hood Road, Gannett Fleming, Inc., in the Amount of $42,000. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Steve.
I think Steve's out in the lobby speaking to a resident. I can take this if you'd like.
Okay, great.
So as you recall, last year, there was flooding and, and severe stream bank erosion at a property on Robin Hood Road, and we were authorized to perform a design to extend the culvert and correct the, the situation that was out there. This is a change order for that design. There were a number of issues that came up during the design, one of which is the requirements of, of the P A D E P for the permitting. They determined that it wasn't being done under an emergency permit, and they required what's called a, a joint permit with the D E P and the Corps of Engineers, which required extensive hydraulic modeling. And in addition to that, since there was no 100-year floodplain determined out there, that it was just kind of a, you know, one of the FEMA maps had an approximate, they asked us to do the work to, to calculate that 100-year floodplain. And then there was additional easements that were required to extend the culvert in that area. So this is, this is the change order for that, that work that was, that's required for that. And I can tell you that last week, we did get the permit for this project from the, from the D E P.
Thank you. Is there any commissioner comment?
So is this still keeping within the, the project budget that I think we had approved a while ago? This is the one I think we got the state, we got the state grant for to complete. Steve?
Commissioner, that is correct. This is the, this is that project where the, yes, we received a $500,000 state aid to help pay for it.
So, I'm sorry. I apologize. I was out talking to the resident. So the, so whatever this change order is, it's going to be split three ways between us, Eastern University, and Cabrini University. Is that the one we're talking about?
We're talking about Robin Hood, Robin Hood Road.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But if they're willing to pay, if they're willing to pay, that's great.
I should be listening to the monitor when we're out there. So, you know, so the history of the project, the Robin Hood Road, the house that was compromised, you got all through that. So this is really mainly about the D E P permitting process that we had, we encountered, which we literally, what was it, Thursday?
Last week.
Yeah, Thursday, after all this time, we just received D E P approval for that project, literally. And this goes back pre-pandemic, if you remember. And there was also additional easement work that had to be done, as well as some more work on the, what will be the sewer system for the folks who were originally affected. But the easements are actually on the other resident's property, a lot of that. But that's why. So this, you know, two-year permitting process is, is a huge part of it. And then this will take us through bidding documents and construction.
So what's the total cost? Am I looking at 200,000? You said 42 for this, and then 145 for the?
Yeah, this takes it up to 187,000, I believe, if that math is correct.
And can you review again why this is a township governmental expense?
Because if I recall correctly, it's a township project gone bad, correct, Mr. Norsini?
So there was originally a project, a new culvert was installed under Robin Hood Road along with Gabion Baskets, and after that one storm, the Gabion Baskets failed. And you might remember, Commissioner, I showed pictures of the, the eroded bank against these residents' house, the air conditioning, air conditioning unit that was suspended by a rope to hold it up. So we did do this project, and I'm not saying it's anybody's fault or anything, but the end result is we needed to do something else. And what we're proposing is to eliminate all that and install a pipe through there so that that will no longer be open right past that house to alleviate that issue.
And this will get it, though, right? We won't, we won't be coming back in 10 years. This will be a 30-year solution?
I hope it's a longer solution than that, sir. The lifespan of that pipe is 50-plus, so.
All right. 50, so longer than, it'd be 50-year solution.
That is the plan.
Okay. All right, and you, you are confident that that will, the plan will come to fruition?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Any last comments? Staff comment? Public comment? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving to item 5J, Resolution 2021-96, Radnor Township sponsoring Darby Creek Valley Association Plan for Darby Cobb's Watershed Plan. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second. Want me to do this?
All yours.
Okay. So I, I think I do need, I need to abstain from this vote because I'm a board member of the Darby Creek Valley Association, but I am advocating, there is, and we actually have another grant, I guess, that we'll be going and putting in for this, but the Delaware County Delco Greenways Municipal Grant Program is open, and they are awarding grants for projects that are specific to enhancing trails and parks and improving storm water management. They are no-match grants. All the, so this would be, the Darby Creek Valley Association is going to put in for a grant with the Delco Greenways Municipal Grant Program to redo the plan for the Darby Creek or Darby Cobb's watershed. And what that will, it is, all they need is a municipal partner as part of the grant process, and they have asked Radnor to be one, and I believe there's another municipality that is, and they're, they're escaping me right now, but another municipality has also agreed to sign on. So they've asked Radnor to participate as the municipal sponsor for this. It will provide them, if they receive the grant, they will be redoing the, the watershed plan, which will allow us to better understand how the, the, the water flow throughout the watershed impacts not only the creek, but it impacts our township and our residents. It'll also provide us information when we are doing projects and also going out for grants for additional funding for projects. So I think it's to our benefit to participate. Radnor, the majority of Radnor Township is in the Darby Cobb's watershed. There is a small part that I believe is in the Gulf Creek, which is the North Wayne area, but the majority of our township is in this watershed, and I think it can only benefit us to know and under, better understand how things are evolving and changing when it comes to the, the storm water and the water flow throughout the township. It costs us nothing. Nothing. It's free.
Well, somebody's got to manage it, right?
The Darby Creek Valley will manage the grant.
Well, somebody's got to manage from township, being involved, got to go to meetings, have to establish input, or at least have to review, right?
You mean the watershed plan?
I, I don't know. But it's, if township is going, if Radnor Township is going to be the sponsor, what does sponsorship entail? It can't entail nothing.
So we are just supporting their application for the funding?
Right. And, and how does, how does that support manifest itself? What is the support being rendered?
We're just saying that we approve of this grant, and we are supporting their efforts. The nonprofit, it's part of the grant application, they just need to have a municipal sponsor.
So who, who, who was the nonprofit? You said you're part of the board?
It is the Darby Creek Valley Association.
And, and the Darby Creek Valley Association is a, is a 501(c)(3), and is that what you're saying, or is it, is it a different?
It is a 501(c)(3).
It's a c)(3.
And well-established.
And who, who established it, and who's the director, and who's on the board?
Do you want me to list everybody who's on the board?
I think, I think so. I think, I mean, before we, before we jump in, let's little, know a little bit about these folks. Is it just something you're like, oh, I'm on the board, I'm vouching for them, I want this to, I want everyone to join with me in this? Is this on your, Lisa Borowski, is this your, your personal vouching for these people and the, the veracity of this organization?
So, Rich, I guess, sure.
Man, I don't know anything about them.
But I've been involved with them for at least five years. I've been on the board for two. So they are involved in many storm water remediation, and actually, Robin is a board member, so maybe she can even speak more than I can, but they, they do environmental education, they manage and maintain many storm water projects throughout the, throughout Delaware County and the watershed. They have citizen stream keepers, they do testing, they measure the amount of micro-invertebrates in the, in the creek and the tributaries to the creek. They run fundraising events to support their efforts. They do creek cleanups. I sponsor one every year in my ward in Darby. I sponsor one every year in my ward in Darby Creek, at the Darby, over at Darby Creek, either at Sawmill, or we've done them at, over by Cornerstone in the past as well. So they are very active on many different fronts when it comes to the preservation of the watershed. The Darby Creek is a major feeder, ultimately, from, to the Hines, the Hines Preserve and into the Delaware River. So it is a major watershed in our area. But I'm going to turn it over to Robin. She might be able to answer a little more of your question. She's been involved far more than I am.
Definitely interested in the rev, it said they're doing testing, so I'd like to hear about the revenue and forming, formation and, and what other, you said there's education, and what other types of? Do you put out lists of bad people or anything like that?
Other than the questions which-
Lists of bad people?
Yeah, in other words, I, I'm trying to get towards what political activities are there. And I hope you're going to say, we don't do any political activities, but I, I want to see if there's, in other words, do you, if you're doing testing, you're doing fundraising, how much is being raised, and what are the activities surrounding fundraising and the community education?
Are there any commissioner comments before we get to public comments, other than those questions?
So I will say they are a completely non-political organization. Their mission is, if I can, I can call it up here, but Robin probably knows better, but they do stream watch, environmental education, watershed cleanups, EPA Superfund site monitoring. They have a very active program down in Eastwick. They do restoration. They work with, they have grants for the William Penn Foundation, the Citizen Science and Stream Keepers, rain gardens. They have a newsletter, they do tree planting, they do river conservation plans. They assist with ordinances, model ordinances around storm water, and they do education. So if you feel like you haven't put me on the spot enough, Rich, I'm going to put Robin on the spot now.
How about the education component? Explain what that is.
Before we get to public comment, I'm sorry, I'm, we gotta, we gotta do this right, guys. Commissioner Abel, do you have a question or a comment?
Yep, thank you. I, I just have one question. So in the packet, it's, it's the resolution, but we're approving the plan. Is the plan available?
The grant is so that they can do the plan. They can hire the consultants and redo the plan. There is an existing plan, but the, they, it needs to be redone. It's been, I don't know, years since they've redone it.
So Commissioner Abel, Act 167 required watershed management back in the day. And we have, so all the townships had to adopt either the DEP draft ordinance or an ordinance of their own that was equally stringent. And we have different requirements in some, in some different watersheds, hotspots. So, and I, I don't mean to interrupt the person from the Darby Cobb's, but before any changes were ever made to our ordinance, that would come before this board, right? So they can help us draft a new ordinance and provide information to that effect. But any change in the storm water management ordinance is going to go to DEP as well as this Board of Commissioners.
So this plan is just updating what they currently have on file?
Yeah, and this isn't for our township. This is for
No, no, I understand.
Like, the watershed, watershed-wide. So it's not specifically impacting, but we can utilize it. We can use it once it's completed.
And one more question. What, again, Steve, maybe, what is, the township will share, share information, provide feedback on draft plans. What is entailed in that? How much staff time, how much effort, how much money?
So Commissioner, I, back at a previous township that I worked at, I was involved with the Darby Cobb Watershed Group. So it's, it's nothing onerous for us. It's something we, so in my world, it's something I would want to get involved with, and I think it would be beneficial in the end to provide input, to get, receive input, and to be part of, part of the process. It does affect us. Little Darby Creek is in Commissioner Abel's ward. Darby Creek runs through Commissioner Borowski's ward, as well as Sheriff Jeffrey in Montgomery County. I mean, it's, it's, and Delaware County.
So Steve just ripped me down.
But again, I, I'm trying to get a sense of how much time. Is it one hour a week? Is it 100 hours? Is it 15 minutes? How, how much involvement? What's the staff commitment on this?
I don't think there's any staff commitment, per se. They just need a municipal sponsor to say they're going to partner with them, you know.
Understood, Lisa. But in the recitals, it says, the township will lend its support, sharing information and providing feedback on draft plans. That goes to Commissioner Abel's question, like, what is the plan? What are we approving? And what is it that the township needs to do? It's not just lending its name, it's, it's, the recital say something more.
So, to the best of my knowledge, it is, they need a municipal sponsor. We are signing on as, in support of the project. They are going to do the work if they get the grant, so it may not even happen, but they want, if they get the grant, this will help them to do the work, and then we will have access to the final plan.
And, and that, that final plan, what, and I'm going to bring this back to, to the ward, as Steve mentioned, in, in Little Darby Creek, what, how are, how can we leverage that? Like, what are we, what are we going to be able to leverage to hopefully help out with some of these water issues? Like, is, is it data? Is it, is it if we do a project, how much we'll be able to alleviate some of the, the water flow? And, and I'm all, and I'm all for leveraging this debt, this information. I just, I just trying to figure out what, what we're going to be able to leverage.
So the information? The information will help us to, sorry, I'm just looking for the email I have. I mean, the information will help inform us, you know, as we're doing various projects around the township. You know, we have, you know, serious flooding issues when it comes to Darby Creek running through, you know, through Fourth Ward. You know, can we do projects like plant trees? Is that feasible?
Well, I, I guess.
Can we do, you know, what, so it would help, it will help us, it will help inform us, you know, what is happening in the, in the watershed? Where are the areas of flooding? Where are things, you know, how are things flowing? Where are things getting worse? And it will also, once we have that information, we can use that to inform the projects and secure hopefully grant funding for some of these projects.
So right now, right now, we go out and do these engineering projects, and we have firms like Meliora, and we're paying huge amounts of money to, to look at these issues. Is this, could this be a substitute, so we're not paying those companies, and we're getting similar value in return?
That's an answer I don't, a question I don't know the answer to.
Steve?
I don't know. Steve, we, would we use this?
So I, I don't, I don't want, so the projects, like, you're going to see three projects before you at the next meeting, right? That's hard engineering. That's where we do survey and design. I'm not going to speak for, for the group, but that's not usually what something like this is about, right? That's, this is, what we do for projects is very micro-level. Bigger picture here.
And, and that's, that's, that's the context I needed, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Public comment?
Oh, well, I'll just add one other thing. So from the, this is from Jaclyn Rhodes, who is the board president. So the goal is to identify opportunities to reduce flooding throughout the watershed and adapt and mitigate climate change. Plan to have sessions with clusters of municipalities, residents, and other property owners. The hope is that Radnor and other towns can use it to seek funding for projects, et cetera.
And Lisa, I guess-
Also has a public process to it.
Yeah, I guess the one request I have is when this, if this passes tonight, and we have this discussion, you know, I'd like to introduce you to neighbors who, who I have frequent conversations with about water issues in the ward, and, and hopefully that's on your radar screen.
If there's one thing I've learned about the Darby Creek Valley Association is they are very collaborative, and they work very closely with municipalities and residents to, to make an, an impact change when it comes to, you know, flooding and the creek, you know, preservation and new projects. There's a big project that they've been working on over by, it's over by Sacred Heart. I think there's a big project over there. Yeah, the wetlands restoration. So they're, they've already been working on a lot of projects here in the community.
So just in case, I, I send a lot of emails.
You've got to be far more accurate than I am. Uh, thank you, Robin Mann, to 66 Beachwood Drive, Rosemont, and a board member of Darby Creek Valley Association. It's, was established in 1984, and the focus was on protecting, maintaining the watershed and its resources. And the watershed conservation plan that we finalized was under the, the Department of Conservation Natural Resources back in 2002. And in looking now at where we are with that plan, we recognize that the data is, it's out of date, and it doesn't take into consideration a lot of what we are seeing recently in terms of more severe storms, higher levels of precipitation, and more concentrated periods of precipitation, which all adds to the stresses of an already stressed watershed. So we recognize the need for a new plan, and we also wanted to take a look at how we could bring more of a sort of all watershed orientation around the plan so that, and, and foster engagement from one end of the watershed to the other, so that we all understand that we're all in this together, and that upstream impacts downstream quite a lot. So this plan, a, a big contribution we think it will make is to really provide an education vehicle for people who live along the creek and who live in communities where they have opportunities to do strategies on their own properties that can help retain more water, reduce the stress downstream, and, you know, ultimately potentially have a positive impact on, even up in Radnor, on the amount of storm water that is, and floodwater is passing through. So this, we, we will be having gatherings of, you know, public gatherings and consultations with the township. But mainly, this is a consultant will be preparing a plan, doing a lot of analysis, incorporating some hydraulic modeling, but it will give us a much better feel for where some of the work can be done, where it will have the best bang for buck, and that will help us with applying for grants. So currently, we do a fair amount of, of work collaborating with others, putting in rain gardens and that kind of thing, but, you know, this will help to figure out where's the best place to be doing that. And another thing I'm excited about is the opportunity to really help people appreciate that big expanses of lawn don't really contribute very much to holding back water. And so there may be ways that people can do planning on their own properties that will actually help, so. I'm probably near the end of my five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
What about the educational component of this organization?
Real quick.
And also, how much, how much revenue is it, what's the revenues annually approximately?
Uh, I don't have those figures. I think we're, with our grant funding, we're about 100,000, but I may be low. I'm, I'm not on the executive committee, but I, I can get back to you on that.
In idea.
We do, we've created a new Young Naturalist Program. We, with COVID, we really amped up our online webinar presentations on a whole range of related topics. We used to do more in-school programming, but it's hard to, you know, connect with the curriculums in the schools. We do a lot of field work with kids and with adults, doing stream watch and monitoring all the cleanups and, and that kind of thing.
Can I just ask a quick question?
We're out of time for public comment now. You had one minute before.
Can I, I'll ask Miss Mann if I could.
No, we can't. We're done with public comment.
Well then, can I ask somebody? Because it seemed that you want right to public comment.
After we finished up with commissioner comment.
Well, she, she, no, Lisa, hold on. Lisa called Miss Mann up, and I wasn't able to answer, ask my question. I have one simple question. I could have asked it by now.
Just go.
You seem very-
Go! It is taking far too long for us to get through an agenda, which is filled with nothing of any practical import with two, two items that are not-
I had a question. You don't need to overreact.
Sean, you had your time to ask your question, and you missed it.
I couldn't ask my question, because originally-
Ask the question!
Well. So it says no matching funds. Is there going to be, how long are, are you expecting to? How long is this project going to take, and what is expected from the township? Is this kind of like a, is this kind of like the, the Ready for 100, where we're going to have to do a lot of different things afterwards, or it's just the grant, and that's it?
Sean, the, this is specifically for a grant, which is through the, through Delaware County. The grant is not, it's for nonprofits. There is no match required. Use your greenways funds to be the match for other grant opportunities, so nonprofits can apply through the county to get the funding, but there is no match needed. So if they had a grant for something else, and they needed matching funds, they could apply to get the match from the greenways, and then use that as a match, but they don't need to commit to a match, which is similar to what we did at our last meeting. We had to commit to the match for the grant, the DCED grant through Villanova.
That's true.
So there's no match required. Nonprofits just need a municipal partner.
Are they going to be asking for more money? Are they going to be asking for?
They are not, so Darby Creek Valley is not asking us for any money.
Now or in the future?
We are committing, they are not asking us for any money. They have never asked us for any money. They are, they don't seek funding from municipalities, I guess, unless they were going to do a joint project, which I guess they do do. But they are not asking us for any money. All they are asking for us to do is say, we are their municipal partner, so they can apply for the grant. And luckily, it looks like, originally, the deadline was today, but it looks like it's been extended.
Well, thank you, thank you for your thoughtful explanations.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to item 5L, Resolution 202195, authorizing the execution of a grant application to the County of Delaware's Delco Greenways Municipal Grant Program in the amount of up to $100,000 planning and design and $500,000 connect trail development to be used for the Valley Forge to Heinz Refuge Trail, Radnor Trail Extension Project. No matching township funds are required for this grant. I will so move. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Norsini?
Jack, did, did we skip over K, or?
Oh, we did skip over K. I'll come back to that afterwards.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Commissioner, to be very brief, this is a two-part grant, as you noted. One is really to help us address the contaminated soil that was found and the, the engineering required for that. The other grant is for the design that would be left after that contaminated soil was dealt with, and how we work that into the trail, as well as final grades for the trail. This is the Radnor Trail Extension, Radnor Chester Road, and east towards the Blue Root.
Is there any commissioner comment?
So this is the, the wet area that we, you and I talked about, Steve, by the, by the?
Yeah, Commissioner, this is, now, this is across the street. This is the trail extension. This is the extension of the existing Radnor Trail, which stops currently at Radnor Chester Road.
And it goes up Radnor Chester Road, you mean?
No, it would cross Radnor Chester Road. It parallels Route 30, goes adjacent to Martha Brown's Woods, and eventually terminates up by the Blue Root right of way.
Isn't that right across the street from the new section of the trail that we're, where we've already built for the, on the school property?
That is correct. So this is, this is an extension of the existing Radnor Trail that starts down by Sugar Town Road and ends up at, ends and terminates at Radnor Chester, and is to continue that portion of the trail.
But isn't it, again, or don't we have- But isn't it, again, don't we have trail on both sides of Lancaster there?
Yes. There, so when you're on the trail extension, you're in the woods amongst the houses. You're not along Lancaster Avenue. But they do parallel each other. There's no doubt.
Guys, figuring out where it is that these grant applications are going to be applied is the kind of thing that we should really be doing before we get to the meeting and not spending time at 9:46 trying to decide what it is that we're talking about.
It is a grant application, and my question is why...
There are many opportunities that you have to ask these questions previously.
Why are we, why are we having parallel trails? Why would, why would we be duplicating the trail? Just because we don't, it's not our money?
It's not a duplicative trail, Rich. It's a new, it's an extension of the Radnor Trail, which the, the goal is to hook up with a larger trail system eventually. So it's putting in the pieces that hook up to a larger trail system that will eventually go all the way down to the Heinz Refuge.
So where is it going to terminate again, Steve?
The Penn Dot right of way at the Blue Root.
Penn Dot right of way at the Blue Root. So that, how long will it, it sounds like there's going to be several hundred feet or a thousand feet of trail parallel with the, with the new trail that we built, right?
It is parallel, Commissioner, but I look at it as, exactly as Commissioner Borowski stated, as well as an extension of our very, very, very popular Radnor Trail, which folks want. So even before it hooks up, it's an extension of a very popular pedestrian walk area.
And Lisa said to hook up with a larger regional trail system, but why wouldn't we be using the portion that we just built to do that?
So that, the tap trail takes you up and north, you know, towards Radnor Station. This along, so Bob, Bob Thomas, who was very much involved with the Heinz Refuge Trail, who also designed the original Radnor Trail and this, this is all part of that. Bits and pieces are being built all along. They are two separate trails with two separate purposes, sir.
And Steve, how many trees would have to be taken down to complete this?
We're not that far along yet, sir. Don't forget, this is an existing railroad bed. So I'm sure, I haven't been there for about, for some time. There's volunteer growth of some sort on there, and as we move forward, of course, we would bring this to Shade Tree and back to the commissioners.
Is there any additional commissioner comment? Staff comment? Public comment? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes, five to one. Moving backwards to Resolution 5, or to item 5K, thank you, Commissioner Abel. Resolution 2021-103, authorizing the payment of a change order for the consulting, design, and construction services for the King of Prussia and Eagle Road intersection to Associated Engineering Consultants, Inc., in the amount of $9,000. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner comment? Steve, do you want to tell us anything about this?
Similar in change order to the previous one. Additional Penn Dot work as we try to bring this to bid, and it was with TPD, the subconsultant, with a vast majority.
You said it's going to be split three ways. How do you get the money from Cabrini and Eastern? Do you have to invoice them, or do, does they, are they billed separately by the consultant?
They'll be invoiced by us. It's all, as we move forward and the project comes to fruition, these costs will be invoiced to them.
Can they disagree? Are they going to be, what if they say no, we don't want to, we don't feel like this is necessary?
We won't allow them to use the intersection. Sorry. No, I, they've been very amicable all along. I don't, I don't mean to be flip, but no, they've been amicable all along, Commissioner Booker. Yeah. We have, we have an agreement, steps out how, all this gets paid for, at what time.
Is there any additional commissioner comment? Staff comment? Public comment? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes, five to one. Moving to item 5M, Resolution 2021-82, authorizing the award of the contract for design, engineering, and permitting for the King of Prussia Road Septa Bridge Warning System to Gilmore and Associates, Inc., in the amount of $25,500. Chief, oh, I'm sorry. I will so move. Is there a second?
Thank you. Second.
Steve, while they're pulling this up, if you wouldn't mind, from the engineering standpoint, just lay it out.
Yeah. So I reached out to Penn Dot some time ago. Originally, they weren't on board as much with a passive system, but when I did reach out to them, they were very open to it and helpful. So after getting that from them, I had Damon Drummond, our traffic consultant, talk to them also with us, and with their input and their guidance, we've come up with a proposal to install a passive system for bridge height detection for the King of Prussia Road Bridge, and I will turn that over to the officers here and sergeant. Commissioners, we're just going to simply give you an update. Go to the slide with the numbers. It's 127 strikes that have occurred since we started this project in 2008. I think everybody's been well briefed. We have a lengthy PowerPoint, which we are not showing. All the commissioners have seen it before, and President Larkin also was a witness to a recent accident on the bridge. Officer Janoski is just going to take us through some pictures, and then Steve, if you just want to tell them what the scope is, we will only answer questions if needed. There was a car carrier that went under the bridge. Two vehicles came off, were ripped from the trailer and its mounts. Two vehicles underneath those were damaged. Highway Patrol Unit Sergeant Stantz and his team responded out there. We're very pleased to announce no injuries, but obviously, if there was a car in the other lane, you could see what would have occurred with those two vehicles being ripped from a second level of the car carrier that was previously shown. And the design phase that Mr. Norrisini has is really to, really try and put a stop to this.
What was the date of this, this particular picture?
This was Thursday, September 9th, last week.
So is, should we ask questions now, or you guys have more?
Yeah. So just to, what we're asking the board tonight for is approval to spend the 25.5 to engineer the passive detection system, and, well, that's it.
Can we get a description on what passive means?
Yes, sir. So as opposed to when you go down the airport where there's a beam that cuts through, that shines across the road, this is a passive system. So there will be a sign at the proper height so that if a oversized truck were to proceed, they're going to hit the bottom of this in some fashion, right? So it's not mechanical devices or lights or infrared beams. It's just a passive system in that they hit it and they know.
What does it look like? Does it look like that? I mean, that, we need to spend $25,000 to...
No, it's, and, so what we were envisioning, what we were envisioning...
120, 75. N, 100, sorry. It's 25 and an additional 75?
Now, the total construction cost estimate for two of these items, for two of these, one on either side of the bridge, if you will, all in with the design cost is about $125,000. The vast majority of the cost is what you see there. Not the items hanging down, but the pole and mast arm. That's the expense of the project, right? That's where the money comes through. So we envisioned a sign of some sort with the height, hanging down at an appropriate height that when the truck went through, it would hit the sign. Again, we had plenty of Penn Dot input with this, but if the board, if it so pleases the board to approve this tonight, we will get much more technical with Penn Dot because that'll be part of the permitting process. But they're, they're on board with us and they've been helpful with us. They understand the problem we have.
Can I ask a question here? What are the odds that this works versus what are the odds that it doesn't work? I mean, if people keep hitting bridges, they're not paying attention. They may not be paying attention to that. I don't even care about the $100,000 we spend. It's at the point where maybe we just need to shut it down because someone's going to get killed whether we have a passive system or not. These strikes are getting worse and worse every day. It's near a school. It's near a restaurant.
Sean, we can't shut it down.
Sean, don't forget that there's Jersey barriers where we're sending pedestrians right underneath.
I am, I'm, I'm at the point where part of me wants to support it in hopes that it works, but part of me doesn't want to support it because I don't necessarily know. I mean, we could try it, but if this doesn't stop these strikes, then I think much more serious decisions need to be made about whether it should just be a pedestrian underpass.
So Commissioner, we don't control this road? King of Prussia Road is a state road, nor do we control, control the bridge?
Then, then we should talk to Penn Dot because this is, someone will get killed.
So my question is, since it is a Penn Dot road and since it is an Amtrak bridge, why are we paying for the system to protect their bridge, to, you know, clean up their road? And I know we've had them in here before. I think we've had them in here before. We have. I know we had a whole slew of them in here. They have not done anything on their part. We are talking about investing $100,000, $125,000 in, and to Commissioner Faris' point, something that may or may not work. I mean, I called in the other day on Conestoga Road. I was behind a truck that literally was trying to go under the trail bridge, and he had another guy helping him to make sure like his little smoke stacks didn't scrape underneath there. And I'm, I called in because I'm like, what the heck are these guys doing? You know, they're trying to squeeze their truck in underneath there. It was ridiculous. So why is it that we are fixing their problem? It's not our problem. It's their problem.
So Commissioner, you were very correct. You were absolutely right. When Penn Dot was in here and in numerous meetings with them and Amtrak, they made it perfectly clear that they would not be doing this, that this is something that we would have to do. But to that end, all flashing, blinking, any type of traffic signal, blinking sign is owned and operated by Radnor Township in this township, whether it's on a state road or not. And I think that's part of their reasoning. So all these kinds of devices, whether, not this specific device, but all traffic items of this sort are owned and operated and maintained by the township. That's why Penn Dot does not own these, and that was the main reason for their, their thought that they would assist us, as they have.
They would assist us by not saying we can't do it.
They would assist us in how we move forward in the design process.
Penn Dot is on my last nerve, in case anyone doesn't know. They're on my last nerve. You know, I mean, we need to do something over there. I just don't think that we should be the ones footing the bill for it.
So Steve, we, if we pass this tonight and this is established, and it gets hit, knocked over, damaged, who then is responsible for repairs?
Radnor Township, sir.
Or replacement?
Radnor Township. We would own, operate, maintain this. This would be, be the township.
So if this is hit, if this is hit by a truck too large to pass through one time, is it coming down?
No, sir. It's, whatever device is going to be up there, whatever hangs down is somewhat flexible, not what you saw in that picture, you know, which were like hanging, I don't know what they were. But it's something like that, so it's not going to be destroyed every time a truck goes through it.
Mr. Norrisini, I have a question. How far away from the bridge is this thing put up? Because it looks to me, well, wherever that picture was, that thing had to go, had to be going pretty fast to that car carrier for that to happen.
The warning device will be put up in a spot where they're able to, when they hit the, when they hit the sign, it's going to make noise and they're supposed to be able to stop at that. It's going to be put at a far enough distance to give them enough stopping distance before they will hit the bridge.
Going at what miles per hour? Isn't that the issue, really? That car to be going, I mean, that truck had to be going pretty fast.
That would be part of the design for this.
I can't see you speaking. I'm sorry.
To look at the 85 percentile speed, to determine what the appropriate stopping distance should be for that.
And this is for the solicitor. As Commissioner Borowski has said, Penn Dot's on our last nerves because we have to do a lot of things that they're supposed to be doing, from cleaning out stormwater inlets, et cetera. Is there any way that if we, we do this, which is protecting their bridge, and we have to go and clean up when there's these crashes and things, that we can be compensated and seek compensation? Or are we entitled to any compensation?
Well, we, the township adopted an ordinance, right, for the bridge strike, and I think that's been getting implemented. We've been invoicing and fining both the driver of the vehicle and the owner of the vehicle. So this would be the same scenario. Penn Dot's not going to pay us any money. Now, Penn Dot's going to require the township to get a permit. Part of the permit is, just like any other traffic signal on a state highway, is that here's your permit, and oh, by the way, you own the light. It's going to be the same with the sign, but our compensation is coming from the ordinance that you adopted. It's the last fall, I guess, early part of this year, with the bridge, with the bridge strikes. And I think Amy Lacy and the staff's been invoicing all the accidents since then on any of the bridges, not just this bridge, but any bridge where there's damage done and we have to respond.
John, can I ask a question? Or, does Penn Dot know that this area is unsafe? Have they acknowledged that?
I'm sure, I'm sure they do.
Okay. So why should we assume the liability? Aren't they liable? I mean, if, God forbid, someone gets killed or really hurt, who's liable? I mean, where is, because I don't want to, I don't want to see anyone get injured or worse, but where does that, you know, I mean, where does that liability end for us and start for them and vice versa? We should be, as, as everyone's saying, we shouldn't be paying, pardon, we shouldn't be paying for this.
It's a state highway, but it's in Radnor Township. And as Steve said, lights and signs even on state roads end up, Penn Dot requires us to take ownership of them. So this is an effort, you know, I haven't been involved in this specific project, but to try to remedy the situation and to put a system in place, which you've been discussing for 10 years. I mean, different boards of commissioners have been discussing different ways to, to put something in place so drivers are warned, whether it's an electronic system or, and, and the township's trying to implement that. I'm assuming Penn Dot's not going to have a problem with the township doing it.
So Penn, Penn Dot broke it, but we are liable and have to fix it. Is that correct?
Well, we're not liable. You can choose to do nothing.
Well, if we choose nothing and we know about it, we become liable.
Maybe.
We become negligent.
No.
Well, maybe.
I think they're the negligent ones. Let's sue them for negligence.
Well, I, I think they are, but I'm trying to figure out where this liability and who becomes negligent. I have a tough time paying for this with our money. This is Penn Dot.
Wow. Amazing. We just, the money we just approved without any debate tonight. So we talked about this months ago, and everyone knows that I've been on this issue for, for seven years. Now, number one, what is it that's going to be, first of all, Penn Dot said that they would not approve this on a state road because you're going to have to have something hanging down that's going to be metal or something. It's going to be enough to make a noise on a truck going 40 miles an hour. So it's, it's going to have to really hit the truck for him to notice, to a point that Kathy and Sean made. He might think, wait, what did I, must've hit a branch or something, and then still plow into the bridge anyway. So what's going to be hanging down? Where is that going to be located? Because you're going to have that smashing into trucks in residential areas on, on, on Radnor, on King of Prussia Road, coming southbound. It'll have to be in front of Penn or the 201 or the BDN building coming north. It'll have to be in front of Penn or the 201 or the BDN building coming northbound on King of Pressure Road. So you're going to have metal cans hanging down over the road, hitting trucks regularly in residential area and in the business area? Is that the plan?
So let me go back a minute. So yes, we talked about two types of system, and at the time, the board had no appetite for the electronic system, right? We know that we had a rough idea of cost.
I would disagree with that characterization. I think it was the superintendent who wanted this system.
So we had in front of the board, the board voted it down. We had this exact discussion a year ago with the electronic system that would initiate blinking lights to warn the driver, and the board voted it down. This is the next, the next best option.
Well, the board didn't, this was the suggestion of Commissioner, this was the suggestion of the superintendent. But go ahead.
Well, so understanding that the board had no appetite for the one system, we went forward with speaking. I reached out to PennDOT regarding this system. Originally, you were correct, they were, they, PennDOT had no appetite for this system. I did talk to them. They were, they had seen the light, so to speak. They noted that there's another one out in another portion of the township. So let's just take a quick look at this. There will be a sign. There will be some blinking lights on this item. So the sign's not going to hit a truck like mid windshield. It's going to hit it up high just to let them know that they've hit it. We've talked for years, Commissioner, you're correct, about different systems. So if we don't go with some type of light beam activated system with blinking lights, the flip side of that was a more or less passive system where something alerts the truck driver by hitting the top of his truck.
But if you put that, that thing that's going to hit the truck at 1010, which is what it's going to hit in the windshield. If it, 1010 on a 18-wheeler is going to hit the windshield. It's not going to hit the top of the truck. And if it's going to hit the top of the truck, how do they know, how are they warned of the height that they're approaching?
Well, they'll know, and you're also asking questions at this time. So this is part of the permitting process. How low is it going to hang? All that good stuff. So we brought this to you because of your concerns, Commissioner Booker. We looked at these two ideas, so I, I'm not sure where to go from here.
Well, may I move the table and let me go through and understand exactly what this is? Not only is this in my ward, it's near my home, and I have a lot of concern about the neighbors. So let me review, let's have a meeting on this and go through the design, understand it, and then we can, they can bring it back.
Hearing motions table, is there a second? Motion?
Second, all right, just a second.
All in favor of tabling say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion to table passes. Was that four to one?
Four to one.
Okay. We are tabled. Thank you, guys. Reminder, this has been on the agenda since Wednesday, Rich. There's no reason that we can't have this conversation before the meeting.
I have, we have conversations on other items, so.
That's great. We didn't seem to get any value out of them. Are there any reports of standing committees?
Yes.
Yes. I have a quick meeting I'd like to just talk about with Parks and Rec. So we had a great Parks and Rec meeting. There were a lot of people that came out. Speaking of the Fenimore Woods, I would like to thank them for coming. It was very spirited. I think that we got a lot done. And we do have another Parks and Rec meeting coming up, and that meeting is on October 14th and one is November 18th. So if you're interested in talking more about the trees and Fenimore and all the specifics, please come out to those meetings. Thank you. Oh, and one more. Yep, and one more. I will be hosting a town hall regarding the Garrett Hill overlay. I just don't know when the date is, so it'll be somewhere between now and the next two weeks.
Let's save that for when we have a date. Is there any old business?
I just quickly was wondering when we would have an update on the tax, the, for the firefighters, working on the tax, the property tax thing. We were going to talk about that in September.
Yes, I.
Sorry, I have a...
I apologize. Yes, September was the month. We will have that for you shortly.
For the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Excellent. And just to piggyback on Commissioner Farhi with the Parks and Rec Board, I know that it was, was a very spirited discussion, and I know there were a lot of residents that came out. I have heard from some residents who were a little concerned that there was the state, there, people just want to make sure that accessibility remains a priority as well, that they felt like there might have been some conversation where accessibility might be put on the side. So just to make sure that we keep accessibility in as a priority. I have not had the opportunity to see the meeting myself. I will watch it hopefully this week. But I did hear it was a very good meeting, but people just want to make sure we try to keep accessibility, in addition to saving the trees, as a priority with all of our parks. That's it.
Is there any new business?
I have a new business item. I call on this board to condemn and denounce the actions of Commissioner Agnew this past weekend. Weaponizing the police is an authoritarian tactic used to shut down free speech of those who disagree. It's improper to use police or township resources for this purpose. From the federal level to the local level, we see the Democrat Party dehumanizing and demeaning people who disagree with those who are blocking their political motives or who just disagree with them and their political views. The left has weaponized government, for example, the Russia hoax, and now OSHA, to implement a vaccine mandate.
Russia's not a hoax, it's a real country.
And has also weaponized the media. And here in Radnor, interim Commissioner Agnew has weaponized the police to curtail the basic constitutional rights of those who are interested in the reimagined Radnor campaign, whatever that is. I don't know what it is. It's not a Republican, but it's there, for the, what we had was the police brought in to stop them from talking. To their credit, the police did not do the bidding of those who would impose authoritarian deprivation of liberty and abridgement of speech. This is a very dangerous situation as the Democrats control all of our local as well as national levels of power. We cannot stand for Democrat leftists who weaponize government to demonize or threaten anyone who stands in the way of their attempted Marxist authoritarian transportation of our nation. I call on this board of commissioners to denounce the actions, Commissioner Agnew, in weaponizing the police in an attempt to intimidate perceived political opponents, opponents inappropriately and improperly at a public gathering.
Thank you for your feedback.
May I comment? May I comment?
Do you really, really?
Yes, I really do need to. Because I am thrilled that you brought this up because I could not respond during public comment, but now that you've brought it up, I can. Thank you.
I figured as much.
So I am thrilled to say that every point that was made was a misrepresentation. Why the police were called? Because the six-foot-six resident of that property, when I'm standing on the, right of way on the sidewalk, tried to physically intimidate me. So as I said to him, you, that is going up the wrong road with me. Don't ever try to physically intimidate me. Secondly, as they said, for reimagined Radnor, that they were, as was said to me by one of the two people who was there, they were a political action committee, or they said was they were a PAC. And I said, you know during, and by the way, for the reimagined Radnor, they had a sign in front of their table of the burning towers. I'm not really sure what that has to do with Radnor at all, with reimagining Radnor. You're going to reimagine Radnor into New York City. It's absurd. So when they said they were a PAC, not a political party, and I said, you know, we don't permit anything political during Porch Fest because it is a community, a unity event of which, and I asked them three times nicely, and I, and they said, no, we're a PAC. And I said, well, you know, the first word of PAC is political. That means you're political. We don't have that at Porch Fest. When they refused and really, truly, including the person who was here, tried to physically intimidate me, I was forced to make a call, one of which was not take the band off that was on their porch at the time, but to take the band off that was coming next. And as opposed to them not being told, the people coming to see them being told where they were going to appear, we in fact had someone stand there and tell them. In addition, my comment or retort that I was the commissioner was in response to whatever the person said about who they were. And I said, well, I'm the commissioner, and that's not relevant. What is relevant here for me speaking to you is that I am the organizer and I run Porch Fest, and these are the terms of having people on your porch. This is the deal.
Well, Porch Fest does not trump the Constitution.
I don't care what you're saying.
And Kathy, you know what happened.
Rich, I did not use my authority in any way. What I was telling them is that my authority wasn't relevant.
And it was Susan Stern.
So you weren't there.
So who, somebody came to you and said, these people are running a campaign against us. Can you go and stop them?
How do you know that's what someone said?
That's what I heard.
Well, you heard wrong.
Okay, well, you approached them first, so I don't see...
What's that?
You approached them first. You told them that they, you told, you tried to tell them that they cannot exercise their constitutional right.
No, I approached them and said, no.
And you called the police on them.
I approached them and said, Porch Fest is a non-political event. We permit no sides, no sides, no sides, not Democrats, not Republicans, not independents, nobody to have a table. No, no, don't interrupt me because I was there.
It's not your rule, though. You can't stop them. You can't stop them.
It, listen, we don't permit them to have, no, yes, was it on their property? We asked them nicely three times to take it down because it causes dissension. That was the point. The point of the police intervening, of which I did not leave when the police showed up, I went looking for them, but was because the six-foot-six, maybe he's six-foot-eight, got this far away from me in my face, and I told him, that's the wrong road. Don't ever physically try to intimidate me, ever, ever. So I guess you didn't know that, Rich.
You were trying...
You didn't know that, did you, Rich?
You were trying, you were trying...
Rich, you did not know that, did you?
Guys, guys.
You were trying to stop them from speaking, from exercising their rights.
I am not going to argue with you anymore. You weren't there.
Neither one of you is going to look particularly good right now. Let's all just give it a beat. We can come back and discuss later on.
Yeah, I have a very simple, so if you want to make a motion to have an investigation, that's fine, but I don't know what she said, what he said, if the police were called and there's nothing on top of that, then... And the police have it, seven things.
Guys, let's move on.
No, Jack, please stop.
Jack. We're done with this.
Jack, 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 like I'm, you've gavelled me, you're...
Is there any public comment?
Jack, are you, are you... Then I'll speak very loudly so the microphone can hear. But we are commissioners, and we should be allowed to have a conversation without being gavelled. It is 10:19 at night. This is the people's work. The people's work sometimes goes far into the night. And to gavel and to mute people is not good for you and not good for Radnor Township. Period.
Thank you, Sean. Is there any public comment?
Well, Jack, Jack, I did have two things. One, Steve and Bill are both gone, but so I'll ask you, as the Commissioner, or as the President, with the agenda for next meeting, Steve indicated that there's going to be three stormwater projects. Do you have any idea what the three are?
I do not.
Okay. If Bill comes back before we adjourn, can we let him provide that information?
Three storm, are you sure you're not thinking of waiver requests?
No, I think he said that on the next, on the next agenda, we're going to have three stormwater projects before the board.
I mean, it's going to be on the agenda. We don't, I don't think that we need to do a special...
I'm not saying a special, I'm saying if Bill comes back and has the information, can he be allowed to just inform us? Second, second question. We had the microcell ordinance taken off tonight, and do we have a reason for that?
Lawyer from Cohen was unavailable for tonight. It'll be on the next agenda, correct? Peggy, Peggy sent an email this afternoon.
Yeah, it was, it was explained in the email that...
There was an email.
Mike could not make it from Cohen tonight. He can make it next Monday, so we decided to push it to then.
All right. Yep, I was unavailable this afternoon. And Bill, did you have the list of three stormwater projects for next meeting?
I asked Steve to stick around and catch you up on that after the meeting.
Okay.
He's probably back in his office cleaning up.
All right. Okay, thanks.
But, I mean, we have a draft version. Obviously, that goes through the board president before we, you know, go public with it. So I, and I just want to make sure Steve's ready to go. So as of now, I'm not sure we're there on a couple of things, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Before we make it public, I just want to be certain.
Sure.
Any public comment? Hearing none, I move for adjournments. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.